Supervisor Leopold?
Here.
Friend? Supervisor Friend? Coonerty? Let's check and make sure we have audio. Do we have audio of the team's participants? Try again. Supervisor Friend?
Here.
Supervisor Coonerty?
Here.
Supervisor McPherson? Chairman Caput? There's Bruce, I see Bruce. Supervisor McPherson? I see you.
Here.
Thank you. Chairman, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. And we'll go to the moment of silence. Does anybody have anything to say other than... Okay.
Chair, I would like to say just two things. One is this past week we lost Tegan Spicer, who worked for the Regional Transportation Commission as well as the Santa Cruz Transportation Management Agency and was Executive Director of Temple Bethel. Was a great community member, cared a lot about the community, her friends and family. And it's a great loss that we lost her last Friday. Also, down in Salinas, the Mayor Joe Gunner passed away unexpectedly. And I think we should remember both of them as we do our moment of silence.
Okay. Okay. So we'll have a moment of silence and prayer, and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we have any revisions, Mr. Palacio, are there any late changes or additions to the agenda?
Yes, Chair Caput, there are a number of revisions on the regular agenda. Item 8, there's additional materials, a revised attachment A, packet pages 253 and 256. Also, a revised attachment D, packet page 264. On item number 9, there's a correction. The item should read, "Public hearing to consider and adopt ordinance to extend moratorium on the issuance of new vacation rental permits as outlined in the memorandum of county council." There's also a revised memo, packet page 272. On item number 10, there's additional materials, revised attachment A, packet page 288. There's also revised attachment B, packet pages 300 and 301. On item number 11, staff request this item be deleted, which is packet page 342. There's an addenda on the regular agenda. Item 11.1, "Consider final reappointments to specified at-large positions on the Workforce Development Board. Nominations accepted through June 16, 2020. The board memo printout." That concludes the additions and corrections to the agenda.
Okay. Do any board members wish to pull consent items from the regular agenda?
I do not.
Okay. And public comment. Next is the opportunity for members of the public to address the board on topics that are on today's agenda: consent items, closed session agenda, and topics that are not on the agenda but are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you cannot stay later to speak on the regular agenda items, you may address those items at this time. You have three minutes, and that'll be fine. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Carol Bjorn. Thank you for the chance to speak. So on June 18, the California Department of Health issued this face covering guidance. This guidance is very straightforward, and it's three pages, very simple. And this is from the California Department of Health. This was on June 18. Six days later, our local health officer reissued her face covering order for our county. It's very detailed. There's a lot of words. It's five pages. My question is, why does our local health officer... Why did we reissue guidelines when the state had literally six days earlier given us very easy, easy-to-follow guidelines? Why is the necessity to be so detail-oriented for our county? Further, if you look at paragraph 2 of this order from our local health officer, in the middle of paragraph 2, it says, "When worn properly, face coverings have the potential to slow the spread of the virus." Okay, it says "potential." So this order is based on "potential." When you look up the word "potential" in the dictionary, it says "existing impossibility." So this order is based on something that may exist in possibility. Now compare and contrast that to Ventura County Public Health. They did a very detailed report going through pros and cons of face coverings. This is a multiple-page report. They concluded that there was no incontrovertible, compelling, or even a preponderance of evidence to support an order to wear a face cloth mask in the community, okay? Further, and this is in the email I sent you yesterday, I sent this to you yesterday. Okay, lastly. If you look at people, doctors, neurosurgeons, Dr. Russell Blaylock, I sent this to you yesterday. Everybody can find this online. It's an article that says, "Face masks pose serious risk to the healthy." You guys need to read this, okay? It says, "Dr. Blaylock warns that not only do face masks fail to protect the healthy from getting sick, but they create serious health risks to the wearer." Okay? And then he goes on further in his article. He says, "As for scientific support for the use of a face mask, a recent careful examination of the literature in which 17 of the best studies were analyzed concluded that none of those studies established a conclusive relationship between mask, respirator use, and protection against influenza." Okay, so compare that, a review of the literature, to this, which the whole order is around a potential, a possibility. Why? Why? This is ridiculous. I want to ask the board, please, put this on the agenda today. Vote on it today. Eliminate the local order.
Good morning, Morton. I want to introduce myself. I'm the union representative for the bus drivers, paracross drivers, and lift line. And we're here today because of your obligation to the community. So as of tomorrow, Metro proposed to increase the bus ridership capacities to an unsafe level where social distancing like this is going to be impossible. Right now, we have a limit of eight people per bus, which allows six feet in between each person. And increasing the ridership to double will put a seat in between each person like this. And we're asking for you to step up because Metro's relying on statistics that are unreliable. They're using statistics that were before June 15, when we had free fares, when we had a lot of joyriders getting on our buses. They're also using statistics when only half of the operators were working and not as much backup service was being provided. As of June 25, all of the bus operators have came back. So there's so much hidden backup service that's out there in the community. And even though it's reported on paper that we have a pass-up, they are getting picked up from the backup almost immediately, or if not, we dispatch them right away. And we've advocated for a regular weekday schedule so there's more consistency with the schedule or the schedule is actually there for you to see. And they did propose to put barriers in between each seat to make it safe, to increase the ridership level, to have people sit in the front and back of each other. But they did admit those are not going to be put up for a couple more months. And we are entertaining that barrier, but we want them to wait until then. But they want to impose this hazardous condition on us as of tomorrow. And they also went on record saying, "If any driver refuses to pick up more than eight people, we could be terminated for insubordination." So that's the situation we're in place today. We care about the public. Those are our riders. We built relationships with them. Our family rides the bus. And our ridership ranges from 16-year-olds that just got their first job to elderly that don't have other means for transportation. So they will be forced in these hazardous conditions. They don't have an option to step off the bus. And I want to remind you, our former driver at Metro got the coronavirus. He was the second death in this county while working as a bus driver at UCSC. And all of our neighboring transit agencies, VTA, MST, Sacramento, San Francisco, Oakland, all of them are keeping the safe capacity limits. And their explanation is because they want to follow the state guidance for social distancing, as you see here today. And so we have the resources to provide the necessary service. There's no need to increase the ridership levels until we get those barriers to make it a little safer. There's no rush. You know, the beaches are opening up. Cases are going up. We're only going to get more people outside of our community coming in. So the argument of our county doing so well is irrelevant because now more people are going to be coming in, and we got to be ready for that. And unless we want to start taking a step backwards and be like the MTA drivers out in New York where they didn't put any capacity limits, we will be done. So we're asking for you to step up and reach out to the CEO and to the Metro Board and have them stop this in time.
Thanks a lot.
Good morning, Santa Cruz supervisors and the public at large. My name is James Ewing Whitman. I got to sleep until 4:30 this morning, and I started doing some research on my favorite researcher, and that's actually myself. So I'm not quite sure what to say. I looked on this. I thought I wanted to comment on number 40, but that's not the one I wanted to comment on. So my name is James Ewing Whitman, and I am my favorite researcher. If you type in my full name, space, colon, and whatever title you want, you'll come up with probably 2,500 at least articles. So I'm just going to read something that I published on June 23, 2020. "Santa Cruz County Local Agenda 21 Final Draft, June 3, 1997. March of 1993, the Board of Supervisors endorsed Agenda 21 proposal and in January 1994, officially approved the process and agreed to seriously consider the document as a policy guide." This is from your guys' published information. This is public information. "Addressing the needs common to all, quote, 'Our future really is in our hands.' Gene Norwood, coordinator and editor." So S-E-E-D, social, environmental, economic development. How does this relate to what's going on right now? It relates to what's going on right now in a really nasty, devious way. I have spoken before about what happens to any mammal when you reduce the oxygen. You increase that mammal's... You decrease the acidic level of the mammal's blood, which creates all kinds of illness. So what are these masks doing? They're a way to control us. And it's just... It's really unfortunate that this stuff is going on. And since I've probably stood in front of these councils in the past year at least 50 times, and I've at least spoken 80 times, all those things are recorded. I think there's few individuals in this county can say that they've engaged with law enforcement more than that in the last year. Let me tell you about my engagement with law enforcement on Saturday night at Twin Lakes. That gentleman came up, and I decided, I'm like, "Hey, I'll talk to him." Somebody wanted to video that. And I'm like, "I don't need to be videotaped doing that stuff. I've engaged with law enforcement more than 100 times in the past year, and the only people videotaping me are the law enforcement." Words out of that gentleman's mouth were, "We're all tired of the masks." Well, I think these men and women, the law enforcement in Santa Cruz, they really need to be thanked for all the good things that they are doing. And we as individual citizens have a lot more rights than they do because they didn't make the laws that they're enforcing. So I guess I'm going to release the rest of my time. I could say any of a bunch of things, but I'm just not. I'm just glad to still be able to stand before you because I don't think there's many other places where individual citizens can stand in front of their elected leadership. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good morning, Chair Caput and members of the board. I'm Nicole Coburn, Assistant CEO, and I would like to provide just a very brief update on the 2020 census. As you know, results from the 2020 census will guide annual spending on schools, hospitals, emergency services, roads, and much more. By filling out the census, we are shaping the future of our community. Santa Cruz County is currently at a response rate of 65.9%, which exceeds the state and national response rates. While this is a great accomplishment, we know with your help, we can do better. To aid in this effort, we are launching an awareness campaign to help grow our response rate by 10% in 30 days. To kick off this effort, Santa Cruz County hosted a state and nationally-recognized chalk party where local residents and 12 artists participated in creating chalk art highlighting the census during the month of June. We encourage you to take a look at the Chalk Party Photo Gallery online at www.santacruzcountycounts.us. During the month of July, in partnership with the Santa Cruz County Animal Shelter, we are promoting the census through Pets for People. This campaign will highlight and engage community members and their positively awesome pets to remind everyone that there's still time to take the census. Share a photo or video of your pet reminding humans to fill out the census. We also want to let you know that the census is hiring. The U.S. Census Bureau currently has enumerated positions available in Santa Cruz County, and anyone who's interested can apply for a census job at 2020census.gov/jobs. Finally, we want to recognize Joseph Watkins at the Community Action Board. He's outgoing Assistant Director of the 2020 Census Project. Joseph has been with the project from the beginning and has been full of enthusiasm and ideas for achieving a complete count. We sincerely thank him for his contributions and wish him well as he embarks on a new adventure. Thank you for this opportunity to provide an update, and please follow us on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter for the latest news and information.
Good morning, supervisors. Mr. Caput, I suppose, how to say that, and Mr. Leopold. It's good to see you. I wish that Bruce McPherson, Ryan Coonerty, and Zach Friend were also here. My name is Elise Casby. I work to be a community organizer in the community, especially for people of low income. And I'm here today to speak about the move, supposedly ordered by Alex Clifford and the management at the Metro, and I think also the Metro Board, to increase the ridership capacity on the buses. My understanding is it's going to go from eight to 15. James Sandoval, the leader of the Drivers Union, already spoke here this morning. What I want to talk about today is the inconsistency of that order with the county sheltering-in-place policy. Now, I have my own personal issues with the sheltering-in-place policy. I definitely believe in the virility of the COVID-19 virus. However, I am concerned about abuse of power in times of national emergency. Now, I want to point out that Alex Clifford had a very, very motley history. And that's putting it extremely nicely in terms of what he did to a public transportation company in Illinois. So I continue to question why you brought this person. And for my own self, the answer that I continually come to is that he is a robber baron type of CEO. He wants to eliminate drivers, attack the union. He does not care about poor people, et cetera, et cetera. I feel the same way about Cynthia Matthews. Many people don't know her actual history and how she votes because we don't have independent news journalism in Santa Cruz. We have The Good Times and The Sentinel, who try to look objective, but they are on the side of the wealthy and the elites and those in favor of gentrification. So to go back to the inconsistency, this increased ridership on the buses while keeping the weekend schedule, it absolutely is, I believe, an attempt to put the drivers in a position that's uncomfortable, and it looks like they are not doing their jobs. I've seen misinformation already that Alex gave about a letter from a county health official. I wish I knew her name. James, in his letter to you, contradicted Alex and said that he misrepresented what this health official said. That's a problem. His data on pass-ups are a problem. The drivers are doing everything. We can keep the eight-person limit on the bus, increase the buses through the backup system. James Sandoval has won an award that recognizes his creative problem-solving to keep drivers in their jobs. So I just want to say, please, if nothing else, obey your own edicts, obey your own laws, and be consistent and show your support for the public's health and the drivers' jobs. Thank you very much.
Hello, hi. My name is Dr. Gabriel Russo, and I want to speak about the masks, the imposition of the masks. Where are our constitutional rights in this matter? Governor Newsom declared recently, "Science shows that face coverings and masks work. They're critical to keeping those who are around you safe, keeping businesses open, and restarting our economy." This is a lie. There's no science to back this up, and the WHO and the CDC both admitted. On their websites, the WHO says, "The widespread use of masks by healthy people in the community setting is not yet supported by high-quality or direct scientific evidence, and there are potential benefits and harms to consider. The use of a mask alone is insufficient to provide an adequate level of protection." The CDC on their website says, "No significant reduction in transmission with use of face masks." There is no evidence, and they're saying the same thing. Masks don't protect us. So what is this really about? California has no law mandating masks. Governor Newsom doesn't have the authority to mandate masks, nor does the mayor.
Please wear your mask, please.
Now, there's no California law. What about the Constitution of California that you have committed to preserving our constitutional rights? That's not happening here. Well, the public order was issued a while ago, but this is all a charade. You know why I call it a charade? It's a scam because...
Wear your mask.
I can't talk with the mask. The reason why it's a charade is that this... Where is it? This was all planned out long ago. In 2010, the Rockefeller Foundation wrote a paper called "The Lockstep," and that outlines just what's happening now, including wearing masks, conditioning us, making us comply, leading to forced vaccinations, digital cash, doing away with cash, on and on and on. Event 201 that Bill Gates hosted at the Johns Hopkins University, same thing. They play out this whole scenario. They've planned this a long time ago. This didn't just happen. My partner's daughter, she's scared for her life. She's afraid of the virus. She doesn't understand. The kids are minuscule. The death rate is so low compared to what started the whole thing that made us lockdown. Nowhere near the projections. But why are we still doing it? It was two weeks we were going to lock down to just flatten the curve. What is it now? People's businesses are being lost. People's livelihoods are being taken away. The effects of the lockdown is much worse than any of the viruses would be. We get the flu every year that people die from. It's a part of life. There's risk in life. What about our constitutional rights and being able to live a life? Is that being taken away from us? Do you know about this agenda? That's what's happening here. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Hello, everybody. My name is Johnny. I'm a bus operator for Santa Cruz Metro, and I'm here to address a few things, topics. Excuse me if I'm jumping all over the place here, but I want to address the current working situation with the eight-passenger load. I want to tell the public that the situation your drivers were in during the current pandemic. I want to also address the three months that we were put into place for our split. Group A being working two weeks, and Group B on standby, which reported when called. We currently are in full manpower as of the 25th of this month, just recently. It's been about one week. Things have changed big time. No passengers have been left behind. If you think your numbers only reflect prior to the manpower during the Group A and B split, currently, all of our resources at this time is at full power. Now, you guys know about passengers being left behind, but immediately, as James addressed, we immediately send a driver to the stop and pick them up. So that doesn't reflect on the numbers of the management. We should be here discussing a plan and keeping drivers and public safe and letting the public know every move as a whole. We need unity, and I feel it's not at this time. The current situations with drivers and management imposing 50% increase in passenger load is wrong. You would be upset if you were in my shoes, and I speak for all my drivers. If you increase, or should I say, force the load on us, it becomes an extreme hazard. Nothing is worth risking. So with that being said, I would like to say, if I'm risking my life, then I should consider it a hazard, and we should all be commended by hazard pay. So I just want to address, drivers should have a say on this. And us, all of us drivers are ready to sit down with the board and discuss and let the public know where we're coming from. And it's important to let the public know how we operate and keep them informed. So I'm upset about it, and drivers are upset about it, and we don't agree with it at all. So hopefully, we can come to an agreement and keep them all safe from this COVID because it is a life-threatening situation. And yeah, I don't see why this should be a joke at all. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Catherine. I'm a parent and a citizen here in Santa Cruz, and I am here to strongly oppose the mask order. I have a seven-year-old child. And what I understand, based on the science, is that masks are actually not good for our health. I feel anxiety when I wear my mask because it limits the oxygen I get into my blood, and it prevents me from excreting the carbon dioxide that I need to stay healthy, expecting that young children who run around and come into contact with all sorts of germs, which ultimately boost their immunity, we're putting them in... It's harmful. Governor Newsom states that science, even though he says limited science, but it's science that these masks actually do anything. They don't. These are just to make everybody feel better, and it's a joke. It's a joke if you read the science. In fact, even studies suggest that the N95 masks, not suggest, they noted that even physicians had dizziness, headaches, and even their decision-making was hampered by the use of N95 masks. Breathing is critical to life. And at this point, the CDC estimates that the fatality rate for the coronavirus is at 0.26%. Does that warrant these sorts of restrictions? It makes absolutely no sense to me. It makes absolutely no sense to me. The other thing is with schools. I can't even believe we're starting to talk about the possibility of sending our children back to school with masks and social distancing. In a recent study, or not recent, but more recent, they found 21 facial expressions can be identified by computers. Nonverbal communication is one of the main ways we, as a community and society, and as a sender and a receiver of messages, communicate. Masks mar our communication. And in school, it makes absolutely no sense that we would have children and teachers who are there to learn and to communicate, to wear these restrictive, ridiculous, no-science behind cloth masks. I'm totally against it. Please review the science that does exist. There are resources out there. You are in control of making really important decisions and giving guidelines. Base it on science. Thank you.
Good morning. So I want to talk about this order also, and I also want to mention the definition of a bully. The definition of a bully is someone who seeks to intimidate or coerce. So why are we bullying parents and forcing children over the age of three to wear face masks under the threat of fines and imprisonment? Why are we doing this? Gavin Newsom's directive is only guidance. We've checked this out with an attorney. It is not legally binding. Why are we making this order? Why have you allowed Dr. Newell to make this order, which threatens the community? Why is that necessary? So Dr. Newell said in her press conference, "This may seem stringent, but has proven to be manageable in other countries around the world. We believe we can work with our children." Really? Manageable? Work with our children? Wow. I mean, so here's the thing. What about the lost smiles has just been talked about? Can you see children playing on a playground that can't smile at each other? And the emotional isolation, the confusion that they'll feel about this, the lack of oxygen, suffocation? What about the two boys who died in gym class in China because they were forced to wear face masks while exercising? What about that? So the other day at the farmer's market, I watched a little girl who was wearing a face mask, watching other children who were not playing, having fun. I saw her touch her mask, and there was a deep, profound sadness in her eyes, which was heartbreaking. I felt that. So I just want to ask you if you're aware of what you're doing, that you have the power to cancel this order, to go with the state's orders. The state's not the state's order. Guidance, it's only guidance. Allow that. Follow the state's guidance. Don't be a bully. We don't have to do that. Also, the state guidance includes many thoughtful exemptions, which are not included in our order. Some of these exemptions are for mental health conditions, people with PTSD, who feel panic attacks when they wear these. Some of these people work in our businesses. And also for people who are communicating with someone who is hearing impaired, who needs to read lips in order to hear. We don't have that in our order. Exemption for people working outdoors. Think of the farm workers in fields wearing masks. Really? And wearing a face shield is allowed in the state guidance for employees as an alternative. So I ask you for your leadership. Please.
Chair, I'd remind you that... Chair, I'd remind you that you must have your nose and your mouth covered by your mask. So please, everyone, have your nose and your mouth covered by your mask. If you don't have your nose, you can't speak, so have to cover your nose. Thank you.
Hi, I'm wondering if you all are aware of the lawsuit that's happening in Massachusetts right now? There's currently a lawsuit against the governor of Massachusetts. I really encourage you all to look into this, because it will actually come to California. It will go to every single state government who has used their overreaching power of emergency, of a state of emergency, to cause shutdowns. I do want to remind you, too, that you can act independently, and always have had the right and the will to do so, and there are counties throughout California that have boards of supervisors that are acting independently. And I really liked what Satya said, because you do have that power to think independently, instead of just going with the flow of the governor, and actually even making it worse, as Satya said. So I'm really very concerned about the state of this county and what's occurring under the governor's guidelines, as well as the county guidelines, and it's my belief and understanding the state of emergency never existed. And I think if... That's what's happening in Massachusetts, and I think if you dig deeper, you will find that to be the case. So it has the potential... This lawsuit, I won't go into that anymore. I'm encouraging you now to take light of this and do your own due diligence in this regard, and do not take guidance from the governor, because you will be complicit in the illegal actions that will befall him. And I do believe that will happen, because of unlawfully restricting the citizens from their freedom of choice and their health, business, school, churches, and more. And I'm just going to give you a few examples of counties that have acted independently. The Sacramento County Sheriff's Office will not be enforcing the statewide order Governor Gavin Newsom announced Thursday, requiring masks and face coverings in public. In a statement Friday, the sheriff's office recommended people should be exercising safe practices during this, including wearing masks, but it said it would be inappropriate to criminally enforce the governor's order, due to the minor nature of the offense. So as I sit here, being told to pull my mask over my nose, I just want you to hear what I just said there. The Placer County Sheriff's Office will not be enforcing Newsom's order, according to spokeswoman Angela Mussalem. "We do hope people will take the rule to heart, but we have no interest in arresting or penalizing people who aren't wearing masks in any way," she said. "This is not a police issue," the Placerville Police Department wrote. "The mask order as issued Thursday by Newsom and the State Department of Health does not list or recommend any criminal penalties or enforcement protocols for violators," which is good. I mean, there is no statutory law. Some agencies have indicated they will likely not be enforcing Newsom's new order, such as Roseville Police Department. No law enforcement agency wants to be responsible for shutting down people. So there you go. Thank you very much.
Marilyn Garrett. It's really hard to give credibility to health officials who are forcing unhealthy policies in many ways, including vaccines, which are part of this. You've just heard again of the unhealthy consequences of wearing masks, and the difference between guidelines and mandates, yet we're told here, you have to wear a mask. One wonders all of the real emergencies that are not being focused upon, and I want to just bring up one. This is from Arthur Fersenberg on 5Gspaceappeal.org, speaking about all these satellites that have been launched for SpaceX and by Elon Musk, et cetera. And he says, "The threat to life comes from the fact that all of these satellites are located in the ionosphere." The ionosphere is the source of high voltage that controls the global electric circuit, which in turn provides the energy for life. And he describes more in detail in his article, "A Planetary Emergency." I suggest you check out 5Gspaceappeal.org. All life is being threatened by 5G wireless microwaves. And I brought this detector of microwave radiation, many times it's way up to the top. I've also given you articles showing the blood abnormalities, not carrying oxygen as it should, just from these exposures to the wireless radiation. I'd also like to perfectly address your closed session, where I understand the county administrative officer is due for a higher salary. I vote no confidence in the county administrative officer who orchestrated the censorship of consent agenda items, so that the public can no longer address these items. And one wonders, what does the county not brought to the public eye by such censorship? Not good, in a demonic curse sake. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Joshua Shalise, and I am a bus operator for Santa Cruz Metro Transit District, and I'm here to voice my concerns about the increase of passenger loads and the lack of regard for the safety of the operators, their families, and this community. By allowing more riders, there is an increased potential for transmission of this virus. As described in the Cal-OSHA state guidelines for public transit, we must implement measures to ensure physical distancing of at least six feet between transit operators and passengers, as well as reduce maximum occupancy to support physical distancing. This is impossible with more than eight people onboard. The metro's plan directly violates these clear guidelines. This situation will further push the limits of our quality of life and service. Metro employees, their families, and riders hang in the balance of these hasty decisions made from the comfort and safety of their homes. It is time to recognize they are not the ones on the front lines, and consider that maybe we have some insight on how our job works. What might seem like a convenient solution will ultimately create an unsafe environment. If you look on the Facebook thread posted by Santa Cruz Metro Transit District about upping the passenger load, you can see the comments against it from many members of this community. I'm here to speak in regard for my loved ones, fellow drivers, and most importantly, our riders, because they are more than just passengers to us. Thank you.
Hello, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Taley Laffey-Rosellini. I've lived in Santa Cruz County since 1988, and have been working, gathering signatures for the initiatives to get on the ballot for almost 20 years now. I'm here today to urge you, the members of this body, and all the citizens, and anyone in Santa Cruz County and beyond, to go online on London Real, R-E-A-L, London Real, and you just sign in with your email, check a box that says Terms and Conditions, and click Subscribe. It's free. I've been doing this for more than three months, and I listened to among 600 speakers. There are about 10 that are phenomenal, and I begin with Zach Bush, M.D. My father was a doctor, M.D., a surgeon, who saved the life of a woman the last day of his life. My mom was a nurse, RN, who raised us four kids and volunteered the whole time, same time, at the Seattle Children's Hospital. So here we go. Zach Bush is saying on London Real, "Our COVID-19 assumptions are wrong. Why social distancing and vaccines will make the pandemic worse?" He is a triple-board certified physician specializing in internal medicine, endocrinology, and hospice care. He's internationally recognized educator, and his passion for education reaches across many disciplines, including the role of soil and water, disciplines in ecosystems, in human genomics, immunity, and gut, brain health. I'm having trouble speaking, because this mask, this masking is crazy. It's insanity. He calls for a radical departure from chemical farming and pharmacy. So he says, "We created a tyranny of fear and paranoia, and these deaths are predictable." He, in fact, predicted the Hubei Province disaster two or three years ago. I also urge you to check out Sherri Tenpenny, M.D., Judy Mikulowicz, Ph.D., author of "Plague of Corruption," about the CDC and Fauci, Dolores Cahill, Rashid Buttar, Part One and Part Two. He's beyond an M.D., a DO. He did 100 doctors on his second panel from around the world. You've got to see this. Rashid Buttar, Andrew Kaufman, M.D., Bruce Lipton, M.D., Bobby Kennedy Jr., and Andrew Wakefield, and David Icke last. Part Ones, Twos, Threes, and Four. Thank you. LondonReal.com.TV.
Good morning. Am I on? Good morning, Ellie Black, lifetime resident of Santa Cruz. So here we are again, and I feel like every time I come back here, things are just getting more and more Twilight Zone. So imagine this. I would say most people who are watching this and in this room right now are parents or grandparents, or perhaps great-grandparents. So can you imagine getting a phone call from your child's school, letting you know that your child had passed out during P.E. class and could not be resuscitated? And then find out that a week later, this happened to another child because they're wearing a mask while exercising? Just think about that for a second. Imagine getting that phone call. That this is even a possibility? Now granted, so far, to my knowledge, autopsies have not been done as to why these two children died, but the fact of the matter was that they were exercising while wearing masks. So if there's even a possibility that we're killing our children, why are we not investigating this with every ounce of our ability to do so? How is this even a question? Are we going to go down in history as having been the generation that killed our children for stupid reasons that aren't even scientifically valid? This is crazy, people. This really is crazy. Another thing that's crazy, bars being open until midnight. Not 2:00 AM, midnight. Why is that? The COVID virus comes out at midnight? Seriously, people? This is not about health. This is about control. This is about saying, "Oh, you can go to the bars, but only until we say you can go to the bars." This is not about the COVID virus coming out at midnight. Oh my God. Think about it. Why would the bars close at midnight instead of 2:00? No reason whatsoever. There's no medical reason at all for that. So these questions are very important. Why is this all being done? The other thing I want to bring up is, as we saw earlier today outside this room, there are many, and inside this room, there are many people who are genuinely very, very fearful for their health right now. This cannot be brushed aside. This cannot be ignored. We need to respect the fact that there are people who are genuinely afraid for their lives at this time. So we need to open the debate. We need to have actual debates between medical professionals, not politicians, medical professionals. And we need to have these public discussions so that the public can be informed as to why some of these people have no fear whatsoever, were hugging each other, and other people are terrified. Thank you very much.
Namaste. I recognize the spirit of God within us all. Thank you for letting me participate, masked as I am. I have lived in Santa Cruz County for over 50 years, and in all those periods of time, I have been on various sides of the fence in terms of the political nature of the situations going on. And right now, I find myself in a position of true insanity, where the society as we have known it, in any way, shape, or form, is disintegrating before our very eyes. And we, including all of you who have the ability to make decisions on the political level, are witnessing this. Are you aware of what is going on? There is no medical science behind any of this. None. Research, do your due diligence, as others have talked about. You need to wake up. You need to watch the state, and we need to wield our rights. These are constitutional rights. We do not live in a medical tyranny. Whatever the Surgeon General, the CDC, or all these people have to say is their opinion. Why do you let them have so much power over you? Who is... Who is providing you with the impetus to do this? It's completely illogical. And so I just want you to know that, also that we are witnesses. God is our witness ultimately. So please try to use some of your, whatever common sense you have, and recognize that this is complete idiocy. We are going down as a lost group of souls, so let's try to maintain some sense of reality.
Bruce Tanner. In her recent announcement of the opening of the county beaches, Dr. Gayan Newell complained that people are not willing to be governed anymore in regard to the lawful, unlawful orders she has issued with authority assumed under color of law with this board's complicity. I will remind you of the Declaration of Independence's assertion that government only derives its just powers from the consent of the governed. And again, no one in Santa Cruz who understands what is really going on here consents to the abandonment of our long-observed lawful public polity by this board and other complicit public officials. Dr. Newell, in the same announcement, urged the public to keep an eye out for contact tracers, calling us on our phones with caller IDs from the Sacramento area. This is another unlawful policy this county is now apparently supporting, one which invades the lives of people under a new doctrine that government is responsible for our health and can violate our process and privacy in doing that. I wonder if Dr. Newell, who is not a trained virologist, has any understanding of the real science of the testing that contact tracing is purportedly based on. Very briefly, these tests are either for antibodies or RNA sequences that are supposed to be associated with a virus called SARS-CoV-2. But this virus has not only never been isolated, the sequence used to detect it only come from assays of fluids taken from COVID patients' lungs. These contain a potpourri of broken segments of RNA, most of them quite short, coming in from many sources, including, of course, from the patient's own cells. The code from these segments is put into a computer and then reassembled using software. The multiple sequences supposedly from this epidemic are said to indicate ongoing mutation, but the truth is, the sequence of this virus, if there even is a virus, is unknown. So the PCR tests based on these ginned-up codes are notoriously unreliable, surprise, as are the antibody tests, which have been shown to detect antibodies already in the blood of people who are called COVID-negative. And based on these specious testings, government, with its freshly-mitted mandate to protect, will be destroying people's lives even more than it already has. Children are being removed from their parents now and taken into dangerous state care. Adults will be told they need to self-isolate for two weeks on questionable findings that they may have been exposed. This is madness and must not be allowed to stand.
And thank you to all the incredible people who have come and spoken the things that I've spoken so many times, leaving me room to sing from my choir, "The Hope That We Can Actually Stand as One," all of us, because that's really the goal, and most of us feel that, I know. One word can kill a dream. One word can break a heart that's hiding in the shadows. When our voice is crying out, when our voice is all alone, will we turn away or listen? We can hear your voice. We must hear your voice. If we stand as one, if we join our hands, you will not be alone. We will hear you. If we stand as one, if we join our hearts, you will not be alone. We will hear your call. This is really hard to sing with a mask on. Wow. Our choir is trying to figure a way how to get us back together so we can sing. I shouldn't go on. It's so distracting. It's so scary to not be able to take a full breath. And singing is a key, major part of being human that kept a lot of people alive a long time. This has been the golden age of choral singing. More people per capita are singing in choirs, were singing in choirs, than any other time in recorded history, human history. There are so many collateral losses here, collateral damages. Children dying is not getting the attention? Really? Suicides? We've asked for three and a half months. What are the numbers of suicides now? You don't tell us all this time. It obviously is higher than the two people who died with COVID, not of COVID. Why are we turning our back on all the people harmed while pretending that this will help the few over what's called excess deaths that usually die every year anyway? I don't have a cold heart for those people. I have a cold feeling, running cold in my blood, fear that the huge, huge percentage, 40% expected to go homeless now? Why are we not seeking ways to help that huge population? Please, people, stand together.
Oh, thank you to all those wonderful, courageous, informed, empowered speakers. My name is Barbara Bush. I'm from Santa Cruz, California, and I wanted to mention a few excerpts from a medical doctor with a lot of experience in virology and immunology, mentioned previously by one of the speakers, Dr. Zach Bush, B-U-S-H, no relation. And does anyone know here what a virus is? A virus is a communication network of genomics, the most important building block for life on Earth. We have vilified the very mechanism by which biology has happened on our planet. This is a tragic mistake, a sad day for humanity, science, economics. It causes deep concerns for science itself that we have allowed for this dehumanizing nature. It's a very sad thing. We had the honorable position to be a witness to nature with powerful tools, microscopes, advanced medicine, genomic sequencing, so we've gotten a glimpse of how life has occurred on the planet and the universe. But that life is what we have vilified by trying to convince ourselves that this virus is attacking us? Viruses are not living beings. They are not like bacteria and fungi. Viruses are packages of information that are secreted by living organisms. They are simple arrangements of physical structures such as amino acids, building blocks for proteins. They are a template for life to develop. They can participate in human pathways in biology, but there is not enough genetic information in a single virus to do terrible harm to man. If this was the case, viruses would have killed us long ago. Viruses are integrated into our biology. We decide on a very intelligent way what to turn on and off, to create good or bad. So as we've seen with the coronavirus, the vast majority of people have taken this update and have no symptoms. This is a genetic update to our species that is expressing an adaptation to the stress we have induced on the planet. Viruses were proliferating around the planet long before animals existed. They're building the diversity within the genetic code of our planet. That was, for example, retroviruses can't, for example, stem cells can't be a stem cell without the gene from the retrovirus that was inserted a few million years ago in our mammalian code. So we must stop vilifying the very fabric that created our life. If you want more information on this, there is a YouTube video by Dr. Zach Bush, and it's still up. It hasn't been censored or taken off yet. Get informed. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Kat Willis, and I am a business owner and of a nonprofit, Tannery World Dance and Cultural Center. I'd like to read a statement, please. On behalf of the NAACP Santa Cruz Chapter, the Black Lives Matter movement currently taking place in the county of Santa Cruz and the collective Black community at large, I call on the County Board of Supervisors to create an immediate action committee alongside the Black community in Santa Cruz to look over the budget and help us form a task force to address inequities in funding for the Black community and people of color in our community and the county. Can you hear me? Okay. Mr. Leopold, I want to thank you for reaching out to Joy Flynn. I know that I have some people let me know that you had tried to reach out to me as well, and I thank you for doing that. I also call on the rest of the County Board of Supervisors to engage in an actionable plan and conversation for change in Santa Cruz County. You can reach out to myself, Kat Willis, again with the Tannery World Dance and Cultural Center, and also the NAACP Santa Cruz County Chapter, and other Black leaders in the community. But we call on you and ask that you help form a committee with us and a task force with us. We also invite that conversation to include Mayor Cummings, Chief Andy Mills, the county, anyone and everyone who we feel should be at the table. We invite all of you to engage with us. Thank you very much.
Good morning to everyone that's listening. My name is Bernadette, and I'm here as a mother and a grandmother and an advocate for children all over the world. And I want you guys to imagine being young again and not being able to hug and play, and smile, and dance, and play with Mother Nature and all her elements and all the germs they use play with, all the practice that yous had growing up. And why would yous want to take that away from the kids now? Why would yous do that? I ask yous to open your heart and do what's right for the children, right? Do what's right for them. Do what's right for the seniors. It's ridiculous that you have seniors up here shivering and talking and having to cover their mouth. Do what's right for them. Do what's right for you, right? All lives matter, but I stand here before you for the kids, because nobody is doing nothing for the kids but putting fear in their souls. What happened to love and gratitude, right, and hope and faith? What happened to all that and joy and celebrating that we're here today? We're here right now. And what are you doing? You're following orders from criminals, from criminals that are trying to kill our So I'm going to leave you with that, and I hope that you can find it in your heart to do what's right. Do what's right. Stop following orders and do what your heart tells you to do and stand up for your kids, all of yous. Yous are all mothers and fathers, and you have grandkids. Do what's right, guys. Follow your heart.
Howdy, supervisors. Benjamin Cogan here. And I came to second everything that you've heard today. It's not right. How is it? And I'm saddened to see we don't have three of our supervisors here to hear us all out. And I'm sure they're watching, and we'll find out. But how is it that if you have the AIDS virus, you're protected under law to keep it confidential, that you don't have to share that with your employers? That you don't have to disclose that information? But now they're going to have the protocol with contact tracers, and they're going to have you install apps on your phone and know who you've been around, who you've been with, who you've talked with, and then somebody can deem you as contaminated, and they can come to your house and take you out of your house and strip you from your kids? The coronavirus is less fatal than heart disease. It's number seven or eight on the death per day. And never in the history of flu-like symptoms have we gone around tracking, tracing, vilifying people for just for things like this.
Mr. Cogan, you have to use your mask.
I got it. It's been proven the mask lowered oxygen levels by 2% or 3% from a 17.5 to a 20.5. I mean, vice versa. So how is it you can make masks mandatory on infants three years old? When at 18 years old, you can vote, at 18 years old, you can go to war, and at 21, unless you change the law, you used to be able to get alcohol. But now you're no longer under the jurisdiction of your parents. You're under the jurisdiction of the government and the criminal organization that's telling you guys what to tell us what to do. And it's not right. And you're going to force out the vaccine protocol, which has a higher death rate than the coronavirus? More people be harmed from that? How many kids are going to be traumatized by not being touched, by not being held, by social distancing, by not understanding? What if that's catastrophic and creates more deaths than the actual coronavirus than actually just building up our immune systems? It's not right to mandate the masks, so I'm taking my mask off. Thank you.
Do we have anybody in the community room? All right.
We have no one in the community room.
No longer? Okay.
You have some web comments, though?
Any web comments? Yes.
The first comment is from Becky Steinbrenner. She actually put in two, so I will set the timer and read them until she runs out of time. Dear Board of Supervisors, how can the county possibly find 1.5 million to give the county foundation to run the S-A-B-E, SAVE, program? And why would the county award a large medical response contract to a non-medical private organization? Community foundations volunteer to assist with coronavirus testing, and now the county is going to pay $1.5 million for their voluntary efforts. Why not contract in a transparent manner with a medically-based organization if the county is not capable of doing the work in-house? Will there be oversight of this? Citizens cannot file a Public Records Act to request it to determine where and how money is spent because community foundation is a private organization and records are not public. Neither are the Board of Directors' meetings. Please do not approve this large 1.5 million sum for the community foundation. That is not transparent at all. Sincerely, Becky Steinbrenner. Her second comment. Dear Board of Supervisors, I note that your 10% pay cuts are optional, and those of appointed department heads are mandatory. Why do you get the option of not taking any cut at all? Maybe you will take a greater-than-10% cut and be good leaders for the masses of people who have lost their jobs and businesses due to shelter and place shutdowns. committee alongside the black community in Santa Cruz to look over the budget and include any equity and inclusion task force to address inequities and funding for the black community and POC in the community. Mr. Leopold has proactively reached out to me and other members of the black community to engage in an actionable plan and conversation for change in Santa Cruz County. We invite you now to do the same. You can reach out to Kat Willis, owner of the Tannery, or myself by responding to the emails I've sent to you individually. I look forward to working with you. Next comment is from Catherine O'Day. Good morning, Supervisors. I'm Catherine O'Day, Executive Director of Save Our Shores. I'd like to speak for a moment about Save Our Shores' concern about PPE litter. Fortunately, our county has not yet been inundated with discarded used facial masks, latex gloves, but these items are showing up increasingly in parking lots and neighborhoods along streets that lead to our beaches and on our beaches. As you well know, these items must be considered to be biohazards, and they put people who can't bear to see them littering our community at risk when they pick them up. At Save Our Shores, we developed protocols around the pickup and disposable of these items to keep our team and volunteers who've been conducting individual cleanups even during this pandemic safe. As we move through the various stages of reopening, and now that our beaches have also been opened again, we anticipate significant increase in this type of hazardous waste. We would therefore like to request that you consider passing a new Waste Management Ordinance to place a significant fine, a minimum of $1,000, on anyone who disposes of PPE and that the fine be levied per item. So if someone throws a used face mask on the ground, it's a $1,000 fine. If they improperly dispose of a used face mask and a pair of latex gloves, they would receive $3,000 fine. We realize this would be difficult to enforce and require that a person be seen littering these items, but even if it's largely symbolic, getting the message out that it could be costly to put other people's health at risk might help deter some percentage of this type of littering. Thank you. Next comment is from Allison McClure. Why are masks required for young children in preschool and daycares? Last I looked, the governor had not yet required it in schools. The Academy of Pediatricians is advising against masks for children under middle school age. Young children keep touching their mask and don't keep them on, defeating the purpose. And the last comment is also from Allison McClure. My daughter is suffering mentally. She asks me every 10 to 15 minutes if something she touched or breathed is going to kill her. Yesterday, she was forced to wear a mask to preschool. It took me 10 minutes to forcibly remove my screaming kid from the car to get her into school. Is the county or state going to pay for the counseling services for her? And that is the end of public comment.
Thank you. Well, that concludes item number five, the public comment. Number six, do we have any board members who have comments or additional direction for items on the consent agenda?
I would have some comments. Thank you, Chair. This being the last meeting of the fiscal year, there's a number of items on here. I just want to comment on, one, on item number 18, I appreciate the effort of the County Administrative Officer and our Economic Development Office to seek funding to be able to provide a revolving loan fund for local businesses. I think that this board has tried to find different ways to support local businesses through this crisis, and I think this revolving loan fund will be a welcome resource for our local business community. On item number 21, I'll just say I'm really glad to see the completion of the solar installations on the various county sites. This project will save the county $28 million over the next 20 years, as well as reducing our greenhouse gas footprint in our community. So I appreciate the work of General Services to get that done. It's always good to see, on item number 26, the annual living wage program report, and it's sobering to think that a living wage here in Santa Cruz is $17.90 an hour. But I'm glad that through the contracting that we do, that we ensure that there's many people who receive this living wage as part of our economic contribution to the community. On item number 31, I want to thank all the employees of the county and the bargaining units who took a leadership position and are agreeing to the furloughs proposed in this item. The county family has responded incredibly well to the COVID crisis. To have them step up to take furloughs so we can keep services going to the community is incredibly important. I also think it's important for the board to take a leadership role, and that's why we have offered to take a 10% furlough as compared to most other employees which are accepting a 7.5% furlough. To get through these difficult times, we know that we all have to contribute somewhat, and as we will find when we come back in August for our budget, we'll see what the impact is on the county budget. These furloughs will help ensure that as many people as possible can stay working and providing services to the community. On item number 33, I urge my colleagues' support for an item that Supervisor Friend and I put on in support of the California Schools and Local Communities Funding Initiative that's going to be on the November 2020 ballot. This split-role tax initiative will ensure that individuals and residences don't carry the burden of taxes here in California, that the corporate and large property owners also carry their fair share. In a time when we're seeing reduced budgets due to loss of sales tax and transient occupancy tax, being able to make sure that corporations are paying their fair share is a great idea. Here in Santa Cruz, that could mean over $57 million more for schools and local government. This will really help us out and won't affect the small businesses. On item number 36, I strongly support this effort by Supervisor Coonerty to dedicate an appropriate memorial at Twin Lakes Beach in memory of Allison Endert. She was a valued member of our community. She was an amazing coworker, and her work in the Third District Office and all the other things that she did will live on for a long time. It's nice that we'll have some kind of memorial for her at a project in which she was so instrumental in. On item number 48, I want to express my gratitude to the Community Foundation of Santa Cruz County, who's been a great partner to the county of Santa Cruz during this COVID crisis. This one and a half million dollars to help with COVID response efforts is an amazing contribution, and we're lucky to have them as a partner with our efforts. Additionally, I'd like to recognize public work for a number of projects, the completion of Stetson Road on item number 50, and as well as the work to be done on SoCal San Jose Road and Brantsoforty Drive and Glen Haven Road. These are all important projects, some dealing with the storm damage, but these roads are used by so many people, especially in our rural areas, and I appreciate the efforts of our Public Works staff to get it done. On item number 51, I want to thank the Director of Human Services for this letter to the Congressional Delegation about increasing access to the Federal Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP benefits, known as CalFresh in California. As we talked about here last week, this program provides critical support for families and individuals here in Santa Cruz County, and the federal government should really step up and ensure that during this time of crisis that we have these resources available for people. And lastly, on item number 69, I'm glad to see this cooperative agreement with the Regional Transportation Commission to continue work on Rail Trail Segments 10 and 11, which is through Live Oak, Capitola, and Aptos. It's really exciting to see these projects move forward as we will finish the first part of the rail trail this September, and we'll continue marching on that progress of building the rail trail throughout the entire community and be done by 2030. I'm really excited about this, and I appreciate the work of Public Works and the RTC to make it happen. That's it.
Thank you. You're welcome. Supervisor Fred?
Thank you, Chair. I do have a couple of things. First, let me also state on item 69, I do have a conflict and will need to recuse myself from that item. My personal principal residence is within 500 feet of the rail line, so I will not be voting on item 69. But I would like to make some additional comments on some of the other items. I appreciate Supervisor Leopold's comments on the item that we brought jointly together on the ballot measure, and I thought that he spoke about it quite well. Supervisor Coonerty and I also have together an item in regards to supporting our federal delegation, in particular Senator Harris, who brought forward an item that would create the Juneteenth National Independence Day Act, which would designate Juneteenth as a federal holiday. I think we can all agree that that is a long overdue national holiday. It's been introduced in the United States Senate. A companion element has been introduced in the United States House, and so let's hope that we can finally move toward the day where that is a national holiday. And I'd like to join with Supervisor Coonerty in acknowledging in supporting item 35 for Allison Endert. I think that's an absolutely beautiful way to remember an absolutely beautiful person, and I appreciate not just you, Supervisor Coonerty, Rachel, and Andy and the entire office there, and I appreciate the work of the Parks Department to find a way to move this forward. It seems like the absolute least we can do to recognize such a remarkable person. I'd like to, speaking of parks as well, would I would like to thank them on item 53, which is in Sea Cliff. We're moving forward on completing that first and, in some respects, second phase with the restroom. This is something that I know that has been long sought by the community, and I think that it's going to be wonderful when it's complete and we're able to fully reuse our parks again. And Public Works, I want to acknowledge them on items 65 and 67, which include a Second District storm repair on item 65, and on 67, the application for the adapted traffic signal system on SoCal through from Trout Goldchamp to State Park Drive, which we know would really help with some of the bottleneck issues that are occurring through there. I just appreciate the creativity and work, continued work to find outside funding means by Public Works. It really helps during these times of economic downturns to keep the ball moving on these kinds of issues. Thank you, Chair. Again, I'll be recusing myself on item 69.
You're welcome. Supervisor Coonerty?
Chair, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple items to comment on. First, Supervisor Leopold mentioned item number 21, the completion of the solar installations. I want to thank General Services, and in more normal times, this would be a major accomplishment in an effort to both reduce costs to taxpayers as well as to take a significant step towards reducing our carbon footprint and addressing the climate crisis. And so I want to thank them for that good work. On item number 34, I want to thank Supervisor Friend for inviting me to join him on the request to our federal delegation to make Juneteenth a national holiday. I think it's incredibly important, the conversations and then the resulting policies that we will be grappling with, both locally at the state and national level, to recognize the impact of discrimination and prejudice in our national policies thus far and how we can address them going forward. And next, item number 35, thank you for the other Supervisors for your kind words. We think this will really be a nice place to remember the contributions of Allison Endert. She was vital on a day-to-day level in that project for almost a decade at Twin Lakes. It's also a place that she and her family often went to just enjoy Santa Cruz like so many other families, and so hopefully it's a place for remembrance and appreciation for both the community and her girls going forward. And then lastly, on item number 48, the Community Foundation. Yeah, I don't think we've appreciated enough how lucky we are to have a Community Foundation who really engaged in this COVID crisis, who's provided us resources, support, who's pulled together partnerships in order to help us address this issue in a way that has served both the health and the economic well-being of this community. And I want to appreciate Susan True and the Community Foundation and their staff for their support throughout this crisis, and it's going to be a partnership going forward. Thank you very much.
Okay. Supervisor McPherson? Can't hear you. Okay.
You can hear me now?
Yeah. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to some of the issues on the consent agenda. On item number 17, I want to thank all county departments and employees for their contributions to the achievements we have seen to date on our operations plan, which was initiated by our CEO, Carlos Palacios. I want to call out a few of those plans that are mentioned in number 17. Item number 76, in that plan, complete streets to schools. 89, reducing food insecurity for seniors. 131, land use regulations to support our housing goals. 174, reducing our carbon footprint through participation on Monterey Bay Community Power. These are all important milestones, and we should be proud of them. And I think it's prudent that, under the circumstances, that we postpone writing a new operations plan until we are more clear on the longer-term impacts of COVID-19, and instead focus on the resiliency and recovery as recommended by our staff. I also would like to point out, number 21, on solar projects, especially want to thank the General Services Department and particularly Deputy Director Carol Johnson for all the work she has done on these projects, as was mentioned. Over 20 years, this is going to save the county $28 million. It's an important investment, not just financially, but more importantly, in an environmental sense. On item 27, regarding the COVID-19 costs, I want to thank all the employees who have worked on the county's COVID-19 response recovery. Our people and power of our services supplies have cost, to this point, at least $13 million, but they are priceless in terms of lives saved. I'm particularly impressed by the actions on behalf of people experiencing homelessness, and our emergency efforts have informed what might be possible with service for this part of our community in the future. I hope we will receive greater state and federal support to offset more of these costs as well as historic losses in revenue in the future. On item number 31, which has been mentioned regarding employee furloughs, again, I want to like to thank the county workers for being part of the solution to our posing budget gap that is just before us. I want to thank my fellow board members and our county department heads for taking the largest cut in an effort to lead by example. With these sacrifices, we're able to close the gap that we're estimating by about $9 to $11 million, and I think that individually and collectively, we have shown that we're willing to respond to this crisis rather than just trim public services. As has been mentioned by everyone, I want to thank Supervisor Coonerty on item number 39, on Allison Endert bringing this item forward to honor a tremendous, outstanding person, a public servant. I will remember this, working with her and seeing what she would have accomplished in the future. She did so much. I think my condolences are with her family, as well as Supervisor Coonerty and Allison's longtime coworker, Rachel Dan. On item number 47, this is an item that was very important to Allison in terms of our public health outcomes. She was a fierce advocate for improving our syringe services program. I hoped we would have these recommendations by June, but I understand with the enormous toll that COVID-19 is taking on everything that we deal with. 39 on Allison Endert bringing this item forward to honor a tremendous outstanding person, a public servant. I will, working with her and seeing that she would have, and what she would have accomplished in the future. She did so much, I think my condolences are with her family as well as Supervisor Coonerty and Allison's longtime coworker, Rachel Dan. On item number 47, this is an item that was very important to Allison in terms of our public health outcomes. She was a first, a fierce advocate for improving our syringe services program. I hoped we would have these recommendations by June, but I understand with the enormous toll that COVID-19 is taking on everything that we, we deal with, and especially for our Health, Health Services Agency. I want to thank, thank the Health Services Agency for the steps taken to date, and I look forward to the report in October, and I hope we don't have any further delays when we get to that, that time in the fall. Item number 57 was on CRV at Ben Lohman Transfer Station. I applaud Gray Bears for their successful operation of the CRV program and Ben Lohman and its positive environmental and economic impacts. To put it in, in numbers, 107,000 pounds of CRV materials and a resulting $78,000 boost to the local economy is a major achievement, and I want to thank the Department of Public Works for partnering with Gray Bears on this project. It's been tremendously successful and very welcome, particularly in the San Luis Obalí. As some of the others have mentioned, we have, we have a fiscal crisis, but we have some dedicated funds for road repairs, and I think it's worth mentioning that we're going to be going out to bid on, on road repairs at Two Bar Road, Alba, and Hub, Hubbard Gulch Roads in my district. These are very important roads in the rural section of the county. I want to thank Public Works for its ongoing effort to work with planning, designing, implementing these repairs, as well as our residents for these patients. We have many more roads to go through, but we're getting to them as quickly as we can, and we're trying to address the most heavily, heavily traveled roads in these areas, and it's good that we're able to move on with some committed funds that we have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Quick comment on 22, the work that, that has been done in the Veterans Building in Watsonville, California. Currently, there's 37 tents set up in the main gymnasium. There are new showers and bathrooms that have been put in, and there are, that's for homeless people so that they can sleep indoors at night, and then also there are seven tents on the second floor for women and children and families. So anyway, it's, they did, they did this very fast, and they did a great job. And then number 31, I'm going to say thank you to the county workers for accepting furloughs, furloughs and concessions on their pay and everything like that. And like Supervisor McPherson mentioned, the biggest cuts will be in the department heads and the Board of Supervisors. I'm very proud of our Board of Supervisors for going along, and so that'll start pretty soon. And then lastly, let's see, number, this is probably just an error, I don't know. Item number 50, I'm thinking maybe it shouldn't have been, it's in the wrong category under Health and Human Services. Maybe it should have been under Land Use and Community Services. Item number 50. That can be corrected later if it needs to. Okay, thank you. And that'll, we'll now have, we need a motion, the second?
I would move the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have first, second?
Noting the one abstention.
The clerk?
No, I think Supervisor McPherson had a, had something.
I wanted to abstain on number 33. I just, I'm unsure about the impact on small businesses.
What number is that?
33.
Okay. I'll do the roll call vote.
Yep.
Supervisor Leopold?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Coonerty?
Aye.
McPherson?
Aye.
Chairman Capet?
Aye. It passes unanimously.
With two abstentions on the two items.
Yes, and they're so, so noted. We have a little time. We'll go to item number seven, consider urgency ordinances and non-urgency ordinances, amending the Santa Cruz County Code, Chapter 7.128 and 13.10 relating to non-retail commercial cannabis regulations, and making findings of exemption from SEQA, schedule the non-urgency ordinances for second reading and final adoption on August 4th, 2020, and take related actions as outlined in the memorandum of the county administrative officer. So we can go right into that. How you doing?
Good morning, board members.
Some of this we went over, was it last week or two weeks ago correctly?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll keep it brief. At the January 20, 28th Board of Supervisors meeting, staff reviewed the time-consuming nature of the use permit process and complying with the conditions of approval. The process has been taking more time than expected, especially for our existing commercial agricultural operators, therefore jeopardizing the potential success of the program. At the June 2nd and 16th board meetings, staff presented a variety of code changes to the board. Those changes were discussed, and the board provided clarity on which of the proposed modifications should be altered moving forward. With regard to the changes, the agricultural use chart modifications include cannabis cultivation and distribution being proposed to be principally permitted in the CA Zone District. These changes are based on existing commercial agricultural operations being allowed to cultivate agricultural products and distribute or drive those products offsite. With regard to the commercial use chart modifications, they include a Level 1 approval process for cultivation and non-volatile manufacturing operations within the C4 Zone District within the Rodeo Gulch zoning overlay. Principally permitted use is proposed for distribution within the C4 Zone and also within the C2 Zone with the caveat that it must be paired with existing retail operations. This approval level would only be for existing legal structures. Cultivation and manufacturing operations will be brought up to current code because they will require building permits to move forward. Lastly, transport-only distribution is proposed to be principally permitted in the PA, C2, and C4 Zone Districts. With regard to the industrial use chart modifications, these are similar to the changes discussed for the commercial Zone District with a Level 1 approval process for cultivation and non-volatile manufacturing proposed for the M1 Zone District within the Rodeo Gulch zoning overlay, and the restrictions on new structures and outdoor cultivation remain unchanged. For clarity, this is the Rodeo Gulch zoning overlay that was referenced in the previous two slides. Within the residential use chart and timber production use chart, the proposed changes do not alter cultivation requirements. Transport-only distribution operation has been added based on home occupation standards and the restrictions placed upon those operations. A residential structure must exist on the parcel, and the vehicle used for commercial work must have dedicated off-street parking. The bulk of the remaining changes are within 1310.650, the non-retail commercial cannabis uses, and those were discussed at the previous two meetings. With regard to changes in 7.128, changes to Section 210 and 230, the enforcement appeals and administrative hearing section, are based on our department's experience implementing the program. These sections add clarity to the enforcement program by eliminating various cross-references to other parts of code while adding proportionality to the fines and fines for illegal operations are proposed to be based on the number of plants, mass of cannabis, mass of cannabis concentrates, and the number of packaged cannabis products. The proposed changes reflect the board's direction and additional clarity provided by the board's motions. We are bringing this as an urgency ordinance to avoid a threat to public peace, health, and safety caused by potential unsafe conditions of unlicensed operations, economic uncertainties and instabilities in an essential marketplace, and pending loss of state licenses by local operators. The ordinance needs to go into effect to allow for the continuity of operations of an essential industry as defined by the governor. Thank you.
You're welcome. And let's see, any questions or comments from board members? Okay, any, anybody from the public here in the councils, I mean, the board chambers?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is John Frizzell. I'm a flower grower here in Santa Cruz County. The COVID has really affected flowers, nurseries. If you notice, there's been no events, there's been nothing on, anything open, no florists. Completely affected all of us, some of the large growers, the kiddyomas, that, I can go down the list of how it's affected all these folks. Agriculture should be agriculture. I've always spoken here and saying it should be in CA land, it should be in ag land, it is a commercial ag product. My biggest concern is I pay property taxes on four parcels. I've lost two tenants due to COVID lately. Mainstream strawberries, organic, have been pulled off the market due to keeping people out of the stores, and that has left vacant land for me. The urgency in this ordinance allows me to go in and plant cannabis in my zone of 60 acres and utilize the property efficiently. It's an essential business, and I'd like to move forward with that. I want to thank you for, you know, looking at this and, you know, taking multiple reviews of it. At the same time, it's urgency that we need to take care of. We're going to miss our outdoor cycle, which gives us a veg time, which gives us competition in the market to have actually volume. If we miss that in another 30 days, it's, it'll be a moot, you know, point for this whole thing. Cannabis is essential, and I want to support my local community, my local county. I have an operation in Monterey County. I've given them $300,000 last year. I'd love to give that to my county so we could see us prosper also. I support multiple employees, multiple markets. I've sponsored two, you know, citizens to raise their families here, and I feel this is good for our community, so thank you very much. Have a good day.
You're welcome.
I'm one of the current operators in Santa Cruz on CA land. So I came in support of the urgency in this measure. With, with most cannabis cultivation by volume, it will occur on the CA land, so it's important to work with us to be able to, to make that happen more easily. To speak to a couple of issues raised by the board, cannabis, cannabis is primarily a container crop, meaning it's grown above ground in containers, and so this allows us to utilize areas of CA land that isn't prime soil for other agricultural crops. That's what we've done at our current parcel. We have to do that to avoid certain things like heavy metal testing because we're highly regulated by the state as well. Cannabis cultivation on the CA land creates a lot of jobs and tax revenue for the county. As mentioned above, you know, we're able to farm on land that's not ideal for some other food crops, so we're creating jobs that may not exist otherwise. We buy local from local businesses, and we also hire local people. We've been deemed essential by the, by the county and by the state, so we've been able to stay open during this COVID pandemic. So a couple of other points are, as most of us are aware, strawberries are the number one crop in Santa Cruz County with a estimated value of 222,200,000, approximately 2,500 acres planted. That average gross revenue is about 85,000 per acre. Raspberries are the second crop, and that has 168 million on approximately 2,300 acres, or yeah, 2,300 acres with a gross revenue of about 72,000 per acre. Cannabis with a conservative estimate is about 10 times that of strawberries with acre producing about $800,000 per, per acre. This estimate will only increase as the demand increases and the illegal operations are brought into compliance. So in closing, it's important for us to pass this urgency ordinance so that cultivators are able to plant this season. That's important to be able to bring in more revenue right now as everyone's taking the hit. It also allows us to hire more people this season, so I think that we should pass this emergency ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chair Capet?
Yeah.
Chair Capet? I'm sorry, there's a person that's been waiting down in the community room, and she has to leave. We were wondering if she could jump ahead if it would be okay for the next speaker?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Can you wait a second? Yeah.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I don't want to be here. I apologize, I have a very shrill voice, and I'm sorry I have to be here to get my voice heard. I submitted my comments, and they have not been posted, and this is of such concern to me that I felt I needed to come down here. It's been a terrifying experience for me personally because I do have a heart condition, and while waiting outside, there were many people who were not wearing masks and who did not respect the six-foot distance. So I don't want to be here, but I'm here to have my voice heard. Your board adopted Appendix B of the International Fire Code and not the California Fire Code on December 10th, 2019 as part of the Santa Cruz County Fire Code. Appendix B of the International Fire Code authorizes the fire code official to use the International Wildland Urban Interface Code for determining the required water supply for parcels where there is no water purveyor. The California Fire Code 2019 does not allow for the use of the IWUIC. The IWUIC exempts all agricultural buildings that have a floor area 600 feet, 600 square feet or less from having an approved water supply, if I am reading this correctly. I don't know that I am, I'm no expert. I can find no such exemption in the California Fire Code 2019. Your board also adopted substandard fire apparatus road widths for parcels in the state responsibility area. Specifically required, specifically required road widths were reduced from 20 feet to 12 feet for driveways serving two or few habitable structures and unlimited non-habitable structures. This is not in agreement with the California Code of Regulations Title 19 Public Safety, nor is it in agreement with the California Fire Code 2019. Additionally, your board adopted the definition of cannabis cultivation to include storage of highly, storage, which is highly flammable material. As I stated previously, a few years ago, my neighbor had a large structure with highly combustible material hatch fire. There was inadequate water to address the fire due to the size of the structure and the combustible material. The structure burned to the ground as the fire response personnel comb the neighborhood for water. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Yeah, we'll come back up here. Thank you.
Company, we have multiple farms located throughout California, Calaveras County, Trinity County, all licensed cannabis farms. We are currently trying to get something going here in Santa Cruz County. We've had a CA property for the last three years that hasn't been able to run due to the stringent policy on the ordinances. We tried to get in through the Lola last year, we weren't able to do it. It's looking like again this year, we're not able to run this property. We also have an SU property up the street that we would like to run, was We also have an SU property up the street that we would like to run, was previously temporary license, then they changed all the ordinances again. I'm just here in support of getting this thing passed so we could get something going this season preferably. We're on, we're going on our third year of not being able to run this CA property, and we provide jobs for many people that, you know, you know, keep the livelihood for many families. I currently have over 15 employees now. We'd like to employ another about eight, eight families into this. Anything we can do, anything, I'm in support 100%. Just want to make my voice heard. Thank you.
I'm Ernie Pasqua. I'm a cultivator in Monterey County.
I might want to bring it closer to you.
I can get on my tippy toes. Again, I'm one of the larger indoor cultivators in Monterey County. We're located in Moss Landing, and I'm here to support Sam's program as well as my fellow cultivators in this, in Santa Cruz County. We currently have 70 to 75 employees, 40 to 45 of them are residents of Santa Cruz County, and it would be more than proud for them to have that opportunity to have the opportunity as we are looking to expand our business. And we'd like to obviously have that opportunity in Santa Cruz County. Just as you may know, as county supervisors, the Monterey County Ag Agriculture Crop Report just came out, and it's very impressive. The Monterey County generated $4 billion, 4.4 billion, and I'll just read the top five agricultural crops. Number one was leaf lettuce of 841 million, strawberry 733 million. Number three was head lettuce, which my family grew for many years, 514 million. Broccoli was number four at 457, and number five proudly is cannabis at 450 million. The number six item, just for, just for note, is cauliflower 212, which is an item my family grew as well. So, again, this is an opportunity that we hope the county and the board will certainly utilize, as many of my colleagues in the county of Santa Cruz have mentioned, it generates opportunities and jobs. And again, thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Okay. Any other comments? Anything from the web?
Chair, I'd be prepared to make some comments and give direction. First of all, I want to thank the people who came out today and all the people who participated in the ongoing discussion we have around cannabis cultivation. As a new industry, this board has worked very hard to make sure that we're listening to constituents, protecting neighborhoods, protecting the environment, and creating a legal industry that can provide jobs and resources for the county. We've looked over these regulations time and time again to, in order to get them just exactly perfect. I feel like we've done that. I appreciate the hard work of Mr. LaForte and the work of the Cannabis Licensing Office and the work that they do ongoing. I think that the testimony today about the importance of urgency so people can get their crops in the ground this year for this growing season makes sense to me, and I would move the recommended actions on this item.
Okay, any other comments by supervisors? Supervisor McPherson?
Aye.
Supervisor Friend?
I have nothing additional to add to Supervisor Leopold's comments. I appreciate Mr. LaForte's work on the modifications over the last two meetings.
And Supervisor Coonerty?
No, I have no comments. Thank you.
Okay. I, I'll be voting no as I did when this came up before. It, well, I won't reiterate what I already mentioned a week ago for the sake of time, but hopefully that this puts the regulations in place, and there are some good things that I agree with. But anyway, it requires a four-fifths vote, right? Four out of five have to approve it.
Yes, for the urgency ordinances, four out of five.
You bet. Okay. So, if there's no further comment, we'll call the roll. We have a first and a second, right?
Yes. Supervisor Leopold?
Aye.
Friend?
Aye.
Coonerty?
Aye.
McPherson?
Aye.
Chairman Caput?
No. And that takes, you know what, we'll take a little break, right? We'll come back at, what was that? Almost, well, we'll take a 10-minute break, come back by 11:10.
Yes, me too.
Thank you. Item, we'll continue with item number eight, consider ordinance amending the Santa Cruz County Code, adding Chapter 5.51 regarding a recycling program for plastic contact lenses and making findings of exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. Consider ordinance amending Santa Cruz County Code 5.47 to delay implementation of a change, of a charge on single-use disposable cups until January 1, 2020. Schedule the ordinances for final adoption on August 4, 2020. Provide additional direction on a possible ballot measure regarding the use of single-use disposable cup charges, and consider report on additional measures to address plastic pollution as outlined in the memorandum of the Deputy CAO and Director of Public Works. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair and board members. I'm Kent Edler, Assistant Director of Public Works, and with me today at the podium is Bo Hoxford from our Recycling and Solid Waste Group, who will join me in the presentation Last fall, Public Works brought several items before the board regarding single-use disposable cups, contact lenses, Mylar balloons, and plastic microfibers. Previous board direction was to conduct outreach and education with the majority of small businesses in the unincorporated area so they understand the administrative burden of collecting the single-use cup charge. To report on how much waste will be eliminated from going to the landfill regarding the single-use cups. Return to the board after doing the outreach with what a potential ballot measure could look like for a November election to potentially redirect where the money from the cup charges go. Return with an ordinance about recycling of daily contact lenses, and look at ridding the environment of Mylar balloons, and finally, return with information about a public education campaign around microfiber pollution strategies. Starting with the waste generated from single-use cups, from the outreach conducted by our program managers, approximately 12.6 million single-use cups are sold in the county annually. That equates to approximately 208 tons. So, for every 10% reduction in single-use cup use, that's 20.8 tons of waste eliminated, and that's approximately, for visual sake, about two and a half garbage trucks. And that's on an annual basis. So, our program coordinators did outreach and with businesses regarding single-use cups. 433 businesses were identified as sellers of single-use cups, and 96% of them were contacted, and Bo Hoxford will go over the outreach.
Hi, good morning. So, our program coordinators went out and conducted this business, as Kent was telling you, and one of the questions was asked if businesses were aware that this ordinance was passed, and as you can see, a majority of them were well aware. Going further, the questions of whether businesses were known to require, were asked to return a portion of the 25 cent charge to the county to support environmental efforts, and 68% said no, and 32% said yes. When asked whether businesses currently had a capacity to track the 25 cent charge at the register, a majority of them did say yes. When asked whether they would, these businesses would be supportive of returning all or a portion of the 25 cent charge, it's about 50/50. A little bit more said, said no, but it was pretty, pretty right on and half. Then another question of, for the folks that were willing to contribute back to the county, were asked what portion they felt was reasonable to return to the county, and about half support 50, 50% sharing, and other half giving 100% back for these environmental program support. When asked the average of how many cups were generated each week, the average was around 560. When asked what costs would a requirement to return all or a portion of the 25 cent charge have on their individual businesses, there were varying responses, and some were saying as much as $400, some really didn't have an idea, and we do have a program coordinator here that could answer the question if you have any concerns about that one. When asked whether there were any concerns or other thoughts about the 25 cent charge, there, the majority, you know, some of the answers were loss of customers, people being, they were concerned that there would be retaliation or being mad at the business and expensive bookkeeping. And again, Christina would be happy to answer any further questions on that.
So, moving on to the cup charge, the 25 cent cup charge is slated to go into effect July 1. However, due to COVID-19 pandemic and the impracticality of businesses handling reusable cups, we're recommending delaying the 25 cent charge on single-use plastic cups to January 1, 2021, and an ordinance delaying the charge is attached to this board item. The limited period of time will give us time to gather information and see what the state of the pandemic is. If it looks like an extension beyond January 1 is needed, we'll return, we'll return to the board in the fall. The county also has an ordinance which requires businesses to charge 25 cents per single-use carryout bag. Caloosa has recently issued guidance on reusable bags and how employees should handle them. Given this guidance, we'll likely be coming back on August 4 to delay that bag charge as well. Another item the board asked Public Works to return with information about is a potential ballot measure to share some or all of the revenue from the single-use cup charges and put the revenue towards environmental programs. Public Works is supportive of such a measure, and it may take, make some sense to include a portion of the single-use carryout bag charges as well if the measure does go forward. Based on our outreach data, if 25% of local customers switch to bringing their own cups, their total revenue generated would be approximately 2.3 million. If 10% switched over, it would generate a revenue of about 2.8 million, and if the ballot measure were to split that money between the businesses and the county 50/50, about half of those charges would be brought back to the county. Let's see. And again, if we do bring the, the single-use bags charges as well in a, in a ballot measure, these numbers would obviously go up. So, our staff worked with the county clerk on what it would take to get a ballot measure on the November ballot and the steps required. Since we're recommending delaying the cup charges past November, it makes sense to push a ballot measure to a subsequent election. The next scheduled election is March 8, 2022. There are numerous items which are listed in this slide which need to be completed as far as a ballot measure, and Public Works would be happy to work on those items. So, there are two options for a ballot measure. The first is a specific revenue measure where the measure would designate specifically that the funds would go to support environmental programs. Under that option, two-thirds voter approval is required. The second option is a general revenue measure where funds generated would go into the county general fund. This revenue requires greater than 50% voter approval. Given the environmental awareness and interest in the community, Public Works would recommend the specific revenue measure. So, Bo was gonna go over the contact lens ordinance.
So, yes, we're also bringing a contact lens ordinance to your, to your board today, and we found out recently that a Bosh &amp; Lom does offer a free recycling program to, to their optometrists. They'll accept all manufacturers, not just Bosh &amp; Lom. We, this proposed ordinance would require that by January 1, 2021, that all providers of contact lenses in the unincorporated county will offer this program, or one, if they're, if they find another one, maybe by another company, they could use that as
So, another item we were asked to report back on was Mylar balloons and ridding the environment of them. Enforcement on release of balloons would be difficult for us to enforce. We're therefore recommending outreach and education to discourage the use of Mylar balloons, and we would use social media, green waste, zero waste, mailer, and potentially the Green Schools Program as part of the outreach. The board may also want to consider a ban on the sale of such products. Hand it over to Bo again to talk about plastic microfibers.
Similarly, with the Mylar balloons, we are recommending outreach and education efforts. Again, we have a Facebook account, the county as well has one, and Jason Hoppin has agreed before in the past to be able to put some of this out on the main county's page as well. We also have a quarterly newsletter, Green Zero Waste News, that goes to all green waste customers that we would advertise to them. We would also, I am working with Green Schools Program, and we would work to educate the schools and the students of these, of these programs as well. And I'll give it back to Kent.
So, we have some recommendations for the board, which are to approve in concept an ordinance to implement a free and convenient recycling program for plastic contact lenses in the unincorporated county, to consider a proposed notice of exemption from SEQA, approve in concept an ordinance amending the county code, Chapter 5.47, to delay implementation of single-use disposable cup charges until January 1, 2021. Schedule the ordinances for final adoption on August 4, 2020. Provide additional direction on a possible ballot measure regarding the use of single-use disposable cup charges, and consider report on additional measures to address plastic pollution. And we're available for any questions.
You bet. Is that it? And then we'll, okay, any supervisors have questions or comments?
Chair, I have a, I have a couple of questions.
Okay, what should we, we'll...
Your choice, you're the chair.
Let's go with Supervisor Coonerty.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions. I'm supportive of all the recommendations. I would not support a collection, act, n, of, 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 charge, even with the businesses that are struggling, the business, or, or, on that count.
Supervisor Coonerty, could you repeat that last part because you were garbled?
Sorry. Hopefully, this is better. So, I'm supportive of all the recommendations. I do believe that we should not sit with acts of, at this time, for, of disposable cup, the administrative, not small businesses, especially, break this topic. We don't need to be, extra administrative burden on either of them, and I think it would be also a significant administrative burden on the county, but I do support the fee delayed to when it's, to when it's safe to do so, but not have it be remitted back to the county. Thank you.
Supervisor Friend?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the good presentation and good research. I'm supportive of all the recommended actions. I am supportive of doing a ballot measure because the timeline that is being discussed is 2022, so I think that the amount of time that could be, that's a long time to help ease any sort of administrative burden and set up a structure that in a cost share would ensure that not only businesses are whole, but they actually would, would come out ahead financially, but... But I really think that, that we need a dedicated stream of environmental programmatic funding. We get asked a lot on cleanups and even on the syringe services cleanup side, there's clearly a need in Public Works for this kind of program. People are already paying this fee on the, on the bags anyway, and soon we'll be on the cups. And it strikes me that, I imagine that most people that pay it assume that the money goes somewhere other than just back to the business. And there's a way to do it so that the business actually is making money above and beyond whatever their administrative costs are, and that the county also has a dedicated stream of money to help improve the environment locally. So, I mean, absent of that, I don't see anything in our future that would be providing this kind of funding. We generally like to have levies that discourage behavior such as this kind of pollution. So it makes sense to have these fees, but then we also like to then have that money come back to programs that also clean up or, and/or improve those kinds of situations, which this money would. So I would, I would support Public Works moving forward with, with something toward a 2022 measure, which is some time off, and specifically having a share with the businesses. I do not support the county taking all the fees or all the funds. I think that the businesses should actually, not just from an administrative side, but just in general, should, should come out more than whole on this. But I think that we could, it would be unwise for us to pass up an opportunity to have somewhere between 1 and 2 million additional dollars come in for environmental programmatic funding for the county that I think is so desperately needed. Thank you, Chair.
Supervisor McPherson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the Public Works Department to bring, to bring this item forward. As you know, while I've been supportive of taking regional actions and approach to reducing plastics in our waste, waste stream, I, I think there's more momentum behind that county taking individual actions. We've been very successful at it. We've been terrific, terrific at reducing, or our recycling programs, I should say, in Santa Cruz County. I, I will be supportive of these actions as long as they have a positive impact on our environment and they're not overly on, onerous on businesses, as has been mentioned. I, I do appreciate postponing the single cup ordinance until January or, or beyond, given the public situation, the public health situation, and can be supportive of asking our voters to determine how those funds should be used. That said, I have a couple of questions. Presently, the ordinance calls for retailers keeping the single cup fee. What are the costs that retailers might be able to offset with that revenue? Have you identified those or have they told you exactly? I know there's been a varying response. You said some say it'll cost them $400, I think that was per year. But where might they be, where might be the offset? And of course, this is to be for future considerations.
Christina Horvath to come up on our program coordinators who worked with some of the
Some of their concerns was basically the cash registers. Some were really small businesses and they may have had to bring in someone to help manage their registers or reprogram them. So that was mainly the costs that they were concerned about and training their staff to, so that was just two of the things that really came up the most.
Okay, thank you.
Questions and comments? First of all, thank you for the presentation. Glad we got to see Christina up here. I know you are out there doing the work, talking to all these folks, making that contact and dealing with the concerns and support that's out there. And also Tim Goncharoff, who's been a leader on recycling efforts for many years here at, in Santa Cruz County. I'm supportive of pushing off the single-use cup fee until January. COVID has really changed a lot of things in, in the world and people's concern about, about reusable items has definitely been affected. Some of it, it has been a very legitimate concern and some of them is just fear. You mentioned something about the bags and coming back in August about bags. And it was my understanding that the governor let the order lapse about not using reusable bags. So what is it that you plan on bringing and what would that look like?
So there's, there's a statewide ordinance that requires a minimum of 10%, or 10 cents per bag statewide. And then we have a local ordinance that requires 25 cents. So we would come back just delaying the county's 25 cent charge. They would still have the 10%, the 10 cent charge from the state, but if we delayed it, then we wouldn't be doing the enforcement locally for, for our ordinance.
Well, I'm just trying to understand why. I mean, what, what's, if we're allowed to use reusable bags, why wouldn't we keep that?
Can I explain that? So there's a Cal OSHA rule in which employers are told to not let their employees touch the reusable bag and to not let the reusable bag touch the counter or the conveyor belt. So the practical effect is that somebody would have to put their own groceries back in their cart and then take them out to, out in the parking lot or outside the store and bag them themselves. Makes it very impractical to be able to bag your own bag. So that's why we thought we would delay the charge because I thought that it would be for the public to be charged the 25 cents, but the only practical alternative is to take their groceries out into the parking lot to bag them themselves. Seems very impractical.
If that's accurate, that, that I agree. When I went into the grocery store this weekend, one of the things they said is you can bring your reusable bags, you just have to bag them yourself. So that's, that's the, that's the disconnect for me about what you're saying and what my experience has been. So when, I'll do some more research before I see something come back. I do support all these actions and I'm glad to see we're moving forward on the contact lenses. On the Mylar balloons and, um, this went out of my...
The microfibers?
The microfibers. I do think we should move forward with this. And, you know, Public Works has, has always played an important role in, in our recycling efforts and our waste reduction efforts. I, I think it would make sense to move forward with environmental health as well on it. And these commissions, the Fish and Wildlife Advisory Commission makes a lot of sense to me. The Commission on the Environment, not as much, but I don't, I don't, I don't have a strong feeling about that. I like using our, our different communication organs to be able to, to share information with people. I do think one of the things that would be useful would be having, to identify a source of funds that we could actually get some of these microfiber devices and give them out as part of an educational campaign. I know that Tim was looking to identify a source. The prices of these have varied depending on when I've looked at it. But I think doing, getting some public information about, about the ease in which these are, can be applied to someone's system, and the cost seems to be coming down, that it seems like there's some value in that. And even if we got 100 of them and we ask the city of Santa Cruz to get 100 of them, you could actually do a, a, a campaign that would help people see that, that these devices are, are easy to install, easy to get, not very expensive. And, and I think that would help in terms of the uptick of people using these devices in order to prevent this, the continued microfiber pollution that we have in our environment. So I'd love to see that as, as part of an outreach campaign.
Before COVID, we were planning on, at Earth Day, being able to educate people about some of the different devices that are out on the market. And it is something we were looking to as, just like we have with reusable bags and with cups before. We were planning on getting a small supply of these to have people start sampling them. We've also looked to, to different research, including UCSC, to be able to, to partner with them to try to sample some of these to see what the actual efficiency of them are. So we are working on it. COVID kind of put a...
Understandably, understandably. But it would be great to, to, you know, once we're past this, this moment that we're in to, to pick that up again because...
Absolutely.
The evidence of this pollution is real, in my opinion. And for us to be able to do things to, to slow the spread of this pollution and stop it in 90% of the cases in people's washing machines makes a lot of sense to me. I look forward to the public testimony. You want to go to the public?
It looks like the electric delay is also a form of transmission. I think the same, you know, they put on the dollar that possibly we could be, you know, the Washington. But I, I would be for maybe, yeah, yes, you know, the, 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 the educational part is really important. What, what actually goes into the recycle, everything you're, you're putting garbage out, you know, every day? I don't know too many people that actually know exactly what goes in the recycle and what actually goes into the garbage. For example, like a coffee cup, I guess the lid goes in the garbage too, or, and the, and the cup goes in the garbage, or can they possibly be put in the recycle? I've never gotten a clear answer on that. So I think the educational part will be really important so that we can cut back on a lot of plastic that could be recycled going into the garbage. And the other is, I think we need to focus really a lot on companies that manufacture all the plastic, the products that we now have and, and make them totally recyclable. So then there's no real confusion. We don't have, and I, it went past pretty quick, 20.8 tons would be removed out of the landfill, was that per year?
Yeah, for every 10% reduction in single cup use, there would be 20.8 tons approximately removed from the landfill.
20.8 tons?
Yes.
That's two and a half garbage truck loads?
Correct.
That's per year?
Yes.
It seems like it would be more, wouldn't it?
Well, they're, they're pretty light and small. So overall, it's, you know, if we, we look on a, the whole, all of the cup use, it's 25 garbage trucks is what, what all the cup use in this county would fill. Remember, they're smashed up and, and small. But, I mean, that number could be a little lighter. I weighed some cups that we have around the office and I took the lower amount, so that it could be quite a bit more.
Okay, yeah. And, uh, now this is for the unincorporated area. Are the other cities, the four cities in Santa Cruz County, are they showing any sign of doing, extending the timeline to 20, January 1st, 2021?
I, I spoke with the city of Santa Cruz and the city of Watsonville and very differing responses, actually. City of Santa Cruz plans on implementing, according to their timeline still, September 8th for their cup charge. They won't be enforcing until about six months after that. The, that six months is going to be an education campaign. City of Watsonville, I spoke today, this morning, and they're, they're kind of putting it on the back burner right now as far as enforcing. They don't, they don't plan on rolling it out as of yet until they, they're kind of on a wait and see approach with, with what happens with the, with, with the next, with what's going on with COVID right now.
Right. Because I got a call yesterday, actually, from a large chain grocery store, and they were asking if Watsonville is gonna extend the free bags until January, or are they gonna stop it right now?
For, for bags, they're, they, they, because they were kind of all over the place, they've, they finally did tell people to, the grocers to stop charging. But as of, as of the time that the governor said it's okay for grocers if they want to, they've been kind of in a holding pattern still. They haven't issued a public response to what, going forward at this point. And that was from, I can't remember her last name, but her, her first name's Hilda, and she, she helps to run the recycling program there in Watsonville.
So basically, they would stay, they'd stay with their current...
But they're just not enforcing currently.
Okay, they're not gonna change it right away?
Correct.
Okay, and that's, that's about it. So there were six different recommendations, so I don't know. It seems like I'm for one, two, three, and four, and maybe putting off five and six, but I'm not sure if I have the numbers correct.
Yeah, so five is providing additional direction. So if your direction is that we, we wait till the 2022 ballot, or if that's one of the directions, then that's, that's certainly, we're waiting for direction from the board on that one. There's not a specific date recommendation in here, just beyond, we think it's better to go beyond the November date.
So when we vote on this, are we, is the ballot measure part of the whole thing or we have to separate it?
I, I think that's at the discretion of the board, what, what you guys want to do. If you, if, if there's a motion that, that we pursue a ballot measure for the 2022 election, then we'll follow that direction.
Yeah. And I, I really appreciate what you're doing here. I, I'm astounded by how much plastic is in, is ending up in the ocean, it's ending up in our washing machines when you wash the clothes. These microfibers are, you know, everywhere. So we have to do something. I, I, so I'm for all of it, but I, I don't want to see the measure fail in November because we're not ready. And also, I think businesses are, they're hurting right now and they don't want any more pressure from the economic standpoint. So it may fail. I don't want that to happen. Okay, that's it. And I'll go for a motion, a public comment. I'll open it up for a public comment. And people here would have three minutes to speak. Anyone in the community room?
No one in the community room.
Okay, any web comments?
Yes, we have three, or two web comments. The first one is from Catherine O'Day. This comment is for agenda item number eight. Good morning, I'm Catherine O'Day, Executive Director of Save Our Shores, and I'm speaking on behalf of our thousands of constituents in this county. I have a number of comments I would like to make relative to the plastics, to plastics today. First, I want to inquire now that the science has been published in a number of studies demonstrating that reusables are as safe as disposables. Will the county return to enforcing all of our existing plastic ordinances, including the ban on containers, single-use plastics, and non-recyclable or compostable food service ware? Second, I want to urge passage of the contact lens take-back ordinance, which will significantly decrease the number of disposable lenses that are flushed down the toilet and out into our waterways and our bay. Third, it is time to take action, not just listen to further research, research and recommendations about this item like balloons and microplastics. Balloons kill, kill untold number of marine mammals and seabirds annually and have been shown to tangle in electric wires and spark fires. Their sale in our county should be banned. Microplastics are now known to be ambiguous in our drinking water and, water, including bottled water and in food items like fish, honey, and sea salt. Washing machine filters have been proven in multiple states to reduce the flow of microplastics into our waterways. It is time to consider an ordinance requiring all new washing machines, commercial or residential, be equipped with a microfiber filter. You have shown tremendous leadership taking action to address our ocean plastic pollution crisis. Plastic pollution is no longer just an environmental issue, it is a human health issue. So please continue the leadership. Thank you. And the second comment is from Ashley Drager. Good morning, Chair Caput and Supervisors. My name is Ashley Drager and I am the Pacific Policy Communication Manager with... Policy Communication Manager with Oceana. On behalf of Oceana's more than fifteen, one hundred and fifty thousand members in California, I comment in support of agenda item number eight, to address litter and pollution reduction from plastic contact lenses. Plastics are profoundly flawed by design, as it is a material made to last forever but designed to be thrown away. Plastic waste generated in the state threatens wildlife, poses risk to public health, and places a huge economic burden on communities in the state. A study by the Monterey Bay Aquarium Research Institute identified consumer-originated plastic debris more than two miles deep in Monterey Canyon. Once in the marine environment, plastic can starve or choke wildlife when ingested and acts as a conduit for harmful pollutants that make their way into the food chain. The ordinance before you is a free and convenient way for businesses to help their customers and other residents of the county safely dispose of plastic contact lenses to prevent these sources of plastic from entering the Monterey Bay. I'm sorry, to prevent the sources of plastic from entering the Monterey Bay's productive and diverse ocean environment, which is treasured by locals and sought-after world, a sought-after world destination by visitors. The ordinance before you is another opportunity for Santa Cruz to be a leader and a critical part of the puzzle in addressing the single-use plastic crisis. And that is all.
Okay, thank you. And anyway, I'm open for a motion, and if you can figure out all the numbers, it'd be great.
Yeah, well, I would recommend, I would make the motion to move forward on the recommended actions, which include delaying the, the fee, also give additional direction for Public Works and Environmental Health to work together on the, the public education campaign, and for staff to come back at the appropriate time to talk about a 2022 ballot measure.
All second.
We have a first and a second, and I'll go along with that. And anybody else? No other comment? We'll follow the rule.
Supervisor Leopold?
Aye.
Friend?
Aye.
Hunertee?
Aye.
McPherson?
Aye.
Chair Caput?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that takes us to number nine, a public hearing to consider an adopted ordinance to extend a moratorium on the issuance of new vacation rental permits as outlined in the memorandum of county council.
Good morning, Board, Jason Heath, County Council. This item is a, a public hearing to extend the moratorium on the issuance of new vacation rental permits during the time that your board is doing the legislative work around adopting new vacation rental guidelines and regulations. The reason why we're asking you to extend it at this time is because the moratorium would elapse before your next board meeting if you don't extend it at this time. This requires a four-fifths vote. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for board members?
No, I look forward to this passage.
Okay. I'll now open up for the public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak, and we'll start with the public here in the chambers. Thank you.
Yes, my name is David Lavelle. I own a property at three six seven Beach Drive in Aptos. I'm not new to the area. I've been coming here since nineteen seventy-seven, when my wife and I announced our engagement at my mother and father-in-law's house in Aptos. Starting twenty years ago, we've owned a beach rental property all of those years. And so I would urge you not to extend this moratorium for several reasons, flaws in the ordinance as I see it right now. Proposing a twelve percent limit in live oak is a mistake. You're rewarding the worst area of vacation rentals in the county.
To be clear, sir, we're talking about just the, the moratorium on new vacation rentals. The next item is talking about the particulars, about the changes in our vacation rental ordinance.
Okay, but I, I think you don't need to extend the moratorium, and, and there's some flaws in it. Part of it is because there are only, I think, seven or eight pending permit approvals right now. Most of the properties, like my property, are not suitable for the regular housing stock. It has never been in the regular housing stock. It doesn't have a front yard or a backyard. It was built and designed seventy years ago specifically to be a vacation house, a beach rental, like most of the properties on Beach Drive. So what I, what I'm worried about is the properties on Beach Drive, which is a, a microcosm of the county, are being lumped in with other residential neighborhoods and maybe unfairly limited. Right now, the island, I don't own a house on the island, I think you guys know what the island is, the twenty-nine houses on Beach Drive. Those houses, only three of them have a parking stall. So if this ordinance goes through the way you have it written, those houses will slowly be taken out of the vacation rental stock. They won't qualify anymore, unless there's an exemption for that. My property, which I, I've owned for twenty years, I have a mortgage on it. I've paid over four hundred thousand in property taxes during the time I've owned it, always paid my property taxes. I've paid over a hundred thousand in transient occupancy tax while I've owned it. I've paid multiple thousands of dollars in vacation rental permit fees, and I believe the permits are good, we should have those. But going forward, the value of that property is probably significantly less if there's no assurance that it could maintain being what it is. It's not going to go into the permanent housing stock, I can tell you. I also worry about doing ordinances like this during the COVID crisis. I did try to sit in on the sixteenth meeting. It's very difficult to participate in these meetings from remote. It's not, it's a pseudo-public process, but it's not really the public process. So I'd urge you to think about this a little bit more. Santa Cruz County is a fragile economic ecosystem. All the money that comes through my property and gets spread into the county most likely comes from other parts of the state. You're going to slowly make it clear, and you've done this now since you started the vacation permit process, then you limited it to five years, and now you want to cap it, that this is not a friendly place to invest. It would be much easier for you to work with the planning staff to make it easier to get multifamily housing approved in the county. You could fix the problem of parking and multifamily housing by working through those channels instead of this. Thank you.
Hello, Randy Maldonado, the broker of Cheshire Rio. I'm requesting exemption for Beach Drive and for these reasons. I've been at Cheshire for thirty-two years, and I remember twenty years ago when buyers who bought properties and the subprime declined their value, they started renting. Here comes VRBO. When VRBO showed up, we had to lower our prices because all of a sudden, the weak mandate became a two-day rental, unsupervised houses with no professional broker mandating that people take care of them. I'm here to do that. I have three owners on Beach Drive, one that I sold that would like to apply for a permit, and wow, he's surprised that he can't apply for that. I understand that you and your wisdom, the institution of the ordinance, was to protect family neighborhoods, you know, from wildness, crazy parties. Beach Drive, in a mile long, ninety-five percent of vacation homes, second homes, we're a mile, we're a quarter mile away from it. You know, we handle the problems when they come up. And, you know, so what I see there is that you, in your wisdom, should let us do our job there and, you know, not, not, what is it, create the inability for investors to get a second home, have income, and be able to enjoy it and still have an upward spiral of value. So we're, that's all we're requesting, is that hopefully Beach Drive can continue to create the dollars for the county as well as the people that I employ, the vendors that I employ, and as well as the landlords. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone in the community room? No? Any web comments?
None.
Okay. Bring it back to the board. Any motions or questions?
Well, we've, we've done a lot of talking about vacation rentals in the years that I've been on the board. We took up in January the idea of making changes to our vacation rentals to deal with the changing circumstances in our community. This board thought that we were going to get a moratorium in place last February, and when it became clear that that wasn't happening, that's why we took this action to an act one. And so in our next item, we're going to be talking about placing a cap on the, the number of vacation rental permits as a total. And so therefore, I support the institution of a moratorium on the, on vacation rental permits that will continue past this, the date of this first emergency ordinance. So I would move the recommended action.
Second?
First and a second.
Leopold?
Aye.
Friend?
Aye.
Hunertee?
Aye.
McPherson?
Aye.
Chairman Caput?
Aye. Passes unanimously. That takes us to item number ten, consider ordinance amending Santa Cruz County Code Section thirteen point ten point six nine four vacation rentals and uses, uses charts within section thirteen point one oh, point three one two, thirteen one zero, point three two two, thirteen point ten, point three five two, and thirteen point one zero, point three seven two to implement amendments to thirteen point ten point six nine four. Proposed amendments in the coastal zone require review and certification by the California Coastal Commission and making findings of exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act, and schedule the ordinance for a second reading and final adoption on August fourth, two thousand and twenty, as outlined in the memorandum of the planning director. There you go.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Caput and members of the board. I think it is still morning. As you just mentioned, this item, the vacation rental ordinance package, was before your board for consideration on June sixteenth, and at that meeting, the board recommended staff make a handful of revisions to the ordinance. So as directed, the recommended revisions have been drafted and incorporated into the ordinance, and the amended ordinance is now before you for your review. So to recap, the board's direction on June sixteenth, the revisions recommended that staff, that recommended by the board that staff make include revising the percentage caps on the number of vacation rental permits allowed, allowed in the designated areas to a numerical cap, to make minor modifications to the parking section, and include a requirement stipulating that owners of rentals located in the designated area subject to parking permits shall obtain a commercial parking pass as opposed to a residential parking pass. To add language to the permit processing level associated with four or more bedroom vacation rentals, stipulating that the permit shall be provisional for one year, with the option of four additional years upon compliance review at the one-year mark. And to revise and clarify and strengthen the enforcement-related provisions in the ordinance. So I'll just quickly go through the changes that were made. So early on in the process of amending the vacation rental ordinance, the board directed staff to include a revision to reduce the overall number of vacation rental permits in the designated areas. And in the initial version of the ordinance, staff had proposed to address this directive by lowering the percentage cap in, in the designated areas. But at the hearing on the sixteenth, the board directed staff to include a numerical cap for the vacation rentals in the designated areas as opposed to an across-the-board percentage cap for both vacation and hosted rentals. So as directed, and as suggested, I think by Supervisor Leopold, the numbers that were included, included in the revisions are a numerical cap of two hundred and fifty-nine vacation rental permits in the Loda, two hundred and forty-one vacation rental permits in the Seda, which is proposed to be renamed the Salzda to include LaSala Beach, and three vacation rental, rental permits in the Dazda. And I just wanted to note that in the revised ordinance, an overall percentage cap for the designated areas is still proposed to account for the hosted rental permits in the designated areas, and there's a hosted rental ordinance amendment package following this package next month. The proposed percentage caps have been adjusted to reflect the new vacation rental numerical cap as directed by the board, combined with the existing number of hosted rental permits that we have in the areas now. Also, at its June sixteenth meeting, the board indicated support for the proposed parking amendments as drafted. However, there were some minor revisions made to the language, which were included. Section was also added that stipulates that vacation rental permit holders with properties located in a designated area subject to a parking permit pass shall obtain a commercial parking pass as opposed to a residential parking pass, such as in areas of the Loda. Another recommended change by the board on the sixteenth was to add a stipulation that for vacation rental permits for four or, for four or more bedroom vacation rentals, that these permits be provisional for one year, and upon review for compliance with county code and the vacation rental ordinance regulations, that the permit may be extended for an additional four years to get them to the five years. So that was added. And finally, upon review of the code violation portion of the draft ordinance, the board directed staff to revise the violations section to align the language outlining the grounds for non-issuance and non-renewal in the vacation rental renewal section with the general violation section, which applies to existing rentals and potential rentals. So staff has made this revision. The board also directed staff to revise the violations section of the ordinance to provide greater flexibility and to bolster staff's ability to pull an existing rental permit up for reevaluation and potential revision. So to address the board's direction, staff developed a level four administrative review process. This would allow staff to reevaluate a permit and the conditions of approval associated with that permit following a pattern of complaints. Through this administrative review process, staff would be able to gather information from the complainants and the vacation rental operator to reevaluate the permit, to apply new conditions of approval to the permit, et cetera. I wanted to point out that staff had initially included language that spoke to complaints combined with evidence of a violation as providing the basis to pull a project up for administrative review. And upon posting the revised ordinance in the packet, it occurred to staff that this section, as worded, was not entirely clear and did not fully address the board's earlier direction. So this section, section L of the ordinance, has been revised once more to address this issue. Then the board should have received a revised section L, which is the violations section this morning or late last night? No? Sorry.
Yeah, we did, actually.
Okay. Okay, yes, sorry, I was seeing a... So as depicted on the revised sheet, staff may now pull a permit up for administrative review upon evidence of a code violation or following a pattern of complaints. And I do have copies of that, of those revisions today, if you would like to see those.
I would definitely like to see them. I did not
Okay.
see that.
Supposed to be available to the public?
Yeah, should be.
I have extras.
Thank you.
Don't go back. Don't go back. I'd just like to point out in the revised ordinance section that I just passed out, on the second page, on page 301, for some reason, you'll see a red box with one of the words marked out. That word is "may." In the clean version, the clean strikeout version that was provided in the pocket this morning, it shows up, but in this strikeout version, I noticed that the "may" is blocked out.
So do we receive this in our email this morning? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out when I want to...
It's been attached to the item and then it was on the revision sheet.
Okay, we're about ready for questions from the board. Have you finished your report yet?
I did, yes. I just wanted to reiterate one more time that this one revised section, the primary difference between what was provided in the earlier packet and this sheet is the removal of the sentence, "The evidence of county code violations or violations as being a basis for pulling a permit up for administrative review." Now staff has the ability to pull something up for administrative review based on a pattern of complaints or evidence of code violation or violations to provide greater flexibility for staff to bring something for administrative review based on a pattern of complaints only, which I believe more accurately captures the direction of the board from the June 16 hearing.
Are you, you're okay?
I have a number of questions about the ordinance.
Okay. You want to do it now?
Yeah, sure. Happy to. Thank you for the presentation. Still trying to assimilate this new section, so I may come back at the end after other questions with additional remarks. I first wanted to talk about the questions of number of permits and percentages. So I was surprised when we, because we talked about dropping the percentages, because my interest was not creating any disagreement about interpretation about percentages and instead have a clear, specific number. So it was a surprise to me that both a number was in there and the percentages. I'll probably ask that to be taken out. But the related question was, when I look at the 259 permits in the Loda, is that just homes and does not include hosted rentals?
That's correct. That's vacation rental permits.
Yeah. So that, to me, that's, it sort of gives a false picture of how many there is. Do you know how many hosted permits there are?
In the Loda, as I recall, there are 40.
Yeah.
So, and they are the existing number of hosted rentals, and we don't have, I think, when we were currently drafting a package of hosted rental amendments now, and we felt that maybe a way to deal with capping the hosted rentals was to still maintain an overall cap for the designated area to account for the hosted rentals combined with the vacation rental permits, the numerical cap. But it is, one way we could handle that is to have a numerical cap for hosted rental permits as well in the designated areas.
Yeah, I mean, I think this 12% number is a false number, right? The number of places in, the number of properties that have guest services is higher than 12%. And that's why having clear numbers, to me, makes a lot more sense. I'll come back to that at the end. The question of the block map, the idea that we shouldn't, we should have less interpretation of what constitutes so many on a block by having a block map makes some sense to me. But two questions I have. One is, we're not going to see the block map until August 4, which is slightly worrisome. But then there's also language in here about, it's in 1310.2B2, which is the planning director or designee has discretion to adjust the block map upon making the following findings. So I thought that the reason we were having the block map is so we could have a better definition and we wouldn't be leaving it up to interpretation. And I'm a little worried about approving a map or approving the concept of a map that I haven't seen along with discretion to change that map that I haven't seen. I don't know whether that's a good idea or a bad idea. Not having seen the map, I'm less inclined to support that kind of interpretation because I think it's, it just worries me. If we're going to have a block map, I think we're going to take out the question of interpretation. I thought that was our goal.
Yes, we, that is true. That is the goal. And the block maps have been created. They were going to be part of the August 4 package, a reference to those maps that are on a GIS layer. The reason why we included the ability for someone to request a map adjustment is because we have such incongruous blocks in the designated areas that it was very challenging to map them. And we wanted to provide a property owner the opportunity to have us take another look at the map on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out how people in the neighborhood have some assurances about what's actually going to happen or not, right? And so I thought we were trying to reduce that question by having the block map. And then this additional provision seems to run counter to that. And so I'm uncomfortable with that language about giving the discretion. The question about complaints, I appreciate the efforts that staff has made to create a system that can actually effectively deal with complaints, because I don't, I'm not sure that right now we do it as well. And the, between what you just shared with us, which is Section L and Section E, which is about local contact person, in Section E, it has to be verified by county code enforcement. But there's nothing in Section L that says anything about verification. So I'm trying to get a sense as to, you know, what, you know, what is, you know, what's verified, what's not verified, what do you have to, you know? I'm just, if I'm giving, trying to give a direction to a county resident who's trying to figure out how to deal with a problem, this is the part where it's hard for the interpretation here where it says a verified complaint, but then in our section about violation doesn't say anything about verified. So I can imagine when a local contact person, if I call on my cellphone at 11:30 at night, and then at 12:30 at night I call again, I could say, "Look, documentation." That should be good enough. I'm not sure if that's verified, however.
Right, so this, the verified section in Section E is just one section where we make crystal clear in the code that failure to respond within 60 minutes does constitute a verified code compliance issue. And may, and we still have the provision that two verified complaints will compel staff to bring something up for consideration of revocation. But in addition to that, we now have the ability for a neighbor to let us know that, "Hey, I called, they didn't answer, it doesn't need to be verified." That would go into the pattern of complaints section that we have now, where it doesn't need to be verified if neighbors now bring to our attention that someone hasn't been operating in accordance with the regulations. We can actually bring them up for administrative review based on a complaint.
I like that. I think it's confusing, however, about the question of when we put this language in there. I think if we're going to have this language, we should have some kind of policy document that's clear about how we're going to deal with these issues. And that would be nice to review at the board, or at least as an informational item, so we're all clear on what the guidance is for the staff. So we can give clear directions and we can manage expectations for people in the community. I think it's, I think right now it's slightly confusing.
Are we going to be able to work this out now? Would you like to put it off till August for the first reading and the...
Chair, I'm just trying to ask questions about this. You know, we're, we just got something, you know, at least I got something important. So I'm just going through the elements of the ordinance that are, that's important.
Okay, that can be cleared up now?
Well, I'm hoping so. I'm gonna, you can call me and I'll give clear direction when the time comes.
Okay.
For a motion. But there are a couple other places. It's, the... With things, there's a number of different sections here about signs, local contact person, posting of rules, noise, et cetera. There's nothing in each section that says failure to post signs could result in possible revocation. Do we feel like Section L captures that? I mean, this is, these are the complaints I hear, that I couldn't reach somebody when I called, that I didn't know who to call because there wasn't a signage up, that maybe the number in the, on the app was incorrect. You know, these are, when you're being woken up at midnight or whatever it is, those are, that's a real problem, right? And I'm wondering whether we have strong enough language in this to know, maybe counsel wants to weigh in? Because I could see adding a sentence to each of those to make sure that everybody knows that you could be, your permit could be revoked if you don't, if you don't keep the information updated.
So Supervisor, I'm looking at the language in L that's been added, and the sentences that are important to me for enforcement purposes are the one that says, "Violation of the requirements to obtain a vacation rental permit may be grounds for denial of a new vacation rental permit application." And the second one says, "Other violations of the county code may be grounds for administrative review of an existing vacation rental permit for denial of a renewal application and for revocation of an existing vacation rental permit after consideration at a notice public hearing." That sentence right there, I believe, gives us all we need to take action with due process against someone who has engaged in violations of the county code.
Yeah, I mean, this is, I'm less concerned about the ones that are property managed. They seem to be generally well-run, but we do have problem houses. And because of our lax enforcement, it's sort of gotten worse. And I just want to make sure that we have the language in there that we're able to deal with the issue effectively, because I don't want to come back and say, "Well, you didn't put that in the ordinance."
There may be a way for us to simplify the language, Supervisor, to, so that those sentences that I read right there don't get lost in the midst of some of the other language. And maybe, maybe planning could work with our office to address that if that remains a concern for you.
Yeah, I just want, the last, that may be a good idea, because there is, the last thing that I would like, I've heard a lot from constituents about this, and the concern was just how these are overtaking neighborhoods. And when you look at these numbers, the Salsta is obviously a lot bigger area and has the same number of permits, but the Loda is a very compact, dense area. And it was negotiated solution 10 years ago to have this 15%. I would argue we're probably at 15% or close to it with those hosted rentals, which is much greater than any of the other areas. And so what I'd like to do is reduce the number of the total vacation rental permits by 15%. So that number goes from 259 to 220. That we strike the language about percentages, because I think that that's a false number. And we wouldn't, we wouldn't exclude, people who have permits, we wouldn't go out and find a number of people to take permits away. But when it came time for renewal, if we were at that, if we were at, if we were above 220, we would not allow renewals until we were, we could get to 220.
Okay, that's a change. I think as it's currently drafted in the ordinance, renewals are not affected by the permit cap.
Then just new, just new?
It would, it just affects new. And we were at 259 when we were here in January, so we included 259. The 12% again reflects the current, the 259 cap in addition to the current number of hosted rentals that comes to 12% in the Loda. We could look at capping the number of hosted rentals to a numerical cap in the designated areas. We're just looking for a way to reconcile those two.
Yeah, I'd like one clear cap.
Okay.
Is really what it comes down to.
Okay. That's good to know, since we are, I think we're just finalizing the hosted rental permit amendments. I did want to just, if I may, go back quickly to the violations section, because I would like to make changes to this section per your direction, but I think the section's one that we've grappled with quite a bit, and it would be, it would be nice to make sure that, that on the record, we have the second piece of what Jason was just reading in the amended section. If I may, it says, "A pattern of complaints," so this is some new language, "A pattern of complaints, such as operating the vacation rental while under emergency orders that prohibit such operation, evidence that the rental is being misadvertised, and/or reports that the local contact person was non-responsive on one or more occasion, or complaints or evidence, complaints or evidence of violations of any other provisions of the county code may also result in a permit being subject to administrative review, which is a Level 4 permit process, including neighboring, neighbor notice, planning staff consideration, additional amended conditions of approval, and possible revocation if we find that those complaints were egregious." So...
So you're reading in changes that are different from the changes that we, that you sent out this morning and different than what was in the package?
This is what we sent out this morning. That is what I just handed out, but I just wanted to make sure, since you didn't have a chance to read that, that I brought it to your attention.
Yeah, yeah, and just for clarity's sake, I didn't actually... Yeah. Yeah. And just for clarity's sake, I didn't actually mean renewals. Renewals have traditionally not been counted towards increasing the cap to new permits.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, I look forward to the conversation with my colleagues about this. I'm, I'm trying to figure out this violations section clearly.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't have a clear sense about it yet, but maybe while other talk, I can look at this and get a better sense.
You can open up the others. Okay. The other supervisors, Supervisor Friend?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Administrator, for the presentation and also for all of your work on the amendments between last meeting and this meeting. I think that the new violations section language does reflect the board's direction from the last meeting, which was to make it broad in the capability for the county to be able to enforce on issues associated with violations of the county code. And I think that the language that you have proposed meets that need. It's also, I support Supervisor Leopold's efforts within his own district to reduce the numbers. As you may remember, this board was divided originally on the hosted rental number component, but I'm glad to see that the board is becoming more united on the fact of a reduction of the overall numbers of both vacation rental and hosted rentals. I think having a clear top number would be very easy for everybody to enforce, and I think that would be important. So I am supportive of what Supervisor Leopold's saying. I do think there was maybe one element of confusion based on the back and forth, though what I'm be sure is, is clear. The question was raised about whether this was a change for existing rentals, at least within Supervisor Leopold's district. The way I was interpreting, what he was looking for was that there would be a 15% reduction, meaning that as things are potentially revoked or not renewed, new ones would not be able to come online until that 15% number was met. This is not, this would not impact anybody that has a permit in good standing, is my understanding. And that isn't the intention of the board to impact anybody that has a current permit in good standing. But as there is an evolution over time, maybe somebody's not interested in maintaining a permit, or maybe they lose the permit for valid reasons, that there wouldn't be new ones coming online. So Supervisor Leopold, I just want to make sure that that was your intention, because it seemed that maybe it was, it was a little bit confusing to planning staff.
Bruce?
He's trying to figure out.
You got to turn the mic on. I'm sorry.
I couldn't hear what you were saying, but I just, I'd just like to clarify. I'm curious about the criteria to deny standard permit renewal without a history of complaints. And I appreciate Supervisor Leopold's questions and as well as Supervisor Friends, because this is where these rentals are concentrated. But I'm just curious about, and maybe that'll be answered in the process, about the criteria to deny a standard permit renewal without a history of complaints on that property.
As for misstating when I, when I spoke, we're only talking about new vacation rentals, not renewals. So if someone has had no history of complaints and it comes time to renew, they would be allowed to renew their, their...
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, this is Brian Kudryk. So we didn't hear the answer to Zach Friend's question about the overall cap and the question of whether existing rentals count towards that cap or not.
You mean existing home rentals and hosted rentals?
Yes.
You want to say something?
Yes, yes. The, yes, the percentage cap captures the numerical cap that is in the revised ordinance, the 259, 241, and 3, and takes into account the current number of hosted rental permits that we have issued in these designated areas. That's how we get to the 12% cap, the 3.9% cap, and the 3.3% cap. So I just took the numerical caps as directed by the board on June 16th, and I looked at how many hosted rentals, and I arrived at that percentage. We could easily strike the percentage cap, because this is really only dealing with the vacation rental permits, and we could keep the 259, 241, and 3 as directed by the board previously. And then in the hosted rental ordinance that we're working on now, we could include a numerical cap for hosted rentals. So we would have a numerical cap for vacation rentals and a numerical cap for hosted rentals. That's one, I think, very clear way of dealing with this question.
Okay.
Chair, this is Supervisor Friend. I just had one other point of clarification. There was a community member on Beach Drive that had raised an issue in the previous item that really was more relevant for this item regarding the parking components. And nothing that is being proposed on this would impact current permit holders. There's no expectation that his rental or any of the other rentals on Beach Drive magically have parking that don't, they don't currently have. What's being proposed is for new applications would have to meet these new requirements for parking. So I just wanted to make sure that that point was clear to the constituent or the community member that had that question.
That's correct.
Can we give one clarification on that, then?
You'll get a chance to, when you come up.
All right. Well, we'll, we'll open up the public hearing here pretty quick. I guess the only comment I'll make is, in District 4, which I represent, I don't think we have any vacation rentals, right?
I don't have the numbers on me for District 4, but if you have any, it's very few. I think you have some hosted rentals.
Right. So anyway, I've been given a lot of leeway here to, because it's very important to other districts in the county. So if we can work out, open it up for public hearing? Anyone in the chamber, speak?
David Lovell, 367 Beach Drive. Just to, just to make a couple of clarifications. I do feel like by setting the numbers this way, that Live Oak gets rewarded, even though it's probably the area of the highest complaints, because it has a higher percentage. And the Beach Drive Salsta area has had a lower number.
Capping it at stability, excuse me, we're capping it at what we consider a stable level, but that area's had very little evidence of complaints, because most of those properties are professionally managed. So it, it seems like it would be fair to do something like 7.5% or 9% as a cap everywhere, but you guys make the rules. I will say, just in some of the public comments, there's this notion that, you know, everybody that owns a house over in that area inherited it, and there are these rich people and all this stuff. I have a mortgage on my property. The rental income I get pays mostly, as I said, $22,000 in property taxes every year, $7,000 in occupancy tax, $8,000 for property management. And by the time I get done, I run about $20,000 negative. So I just want to make that point. I'm, I'm not making a killing in the rental business, but it does help me afford the house. The other part is, I want to clarify on the parking issue. If a property currently has a vacation rental and it changes hands, a new property owner has it, then that would be a new vacation rental. So basically, what you're saying is that people, if you sell your house, the new owner is going to be in a crapshoot situation, whether or not they'll be able to continue it as a residential or vacation rental house. On Beach Drive, those properties have historically been vacation rentals, and I think you're going to decimate the value of a lot of those properties. The day after this passes, I'm going to the assessor's office, and I'm asking for about a 25% break in my property taxes, because the value of that house is partly predicated on my or anyone else's ability to pay the mortgage based on the vacation rental income. I just want to make sure you guys understand that. And also, I do think that there are better ways to fix the housing problem in Santa Cruz County. The planning staff is already overburdened with projects. Now we're funneling a bunch of small items through them and increasing the level of jurisdiction that they have to have over those. It's going to create a big burden on the planning staff. You should be trying to roll out the welcome mat and say, "Santa Cruz County is ready to help you build multifamily housing here." Roll out the welcome mat to multifamily housing developers. That's the way to move the needle on the housing stock. It's not by getting eight houses on the beach to turn into long-term rentals. Thank you.
Anybody, anybody else? Anybody else?
Sorry, I just, this is Supervisor Kudryk. I just like to make a point that most of my district was built as vacation rentals. Seabright, Lower West Side, Beach Plate area. It's now transitioned to a healthy mix of neighborhood and rentals, and we haven't seen any property values decrease. And it's been a net overall good thing to our, to our city and our community. That's why we're supporting the ordinance. I'll move the recommended actions.
We have more. Thank you.
Good morning. Norman Schutzberger, 59134. 20%, 1/5, 1 out of every 5 homes per block. This is truly the heart of the matter. A 20% per block allowance for vacation rentals condemns our residential community neighborhood to that density of party houses on each and every block. 5 bedrooms, purpose-built businesses, as is the one on St. Ensign 35th. 8 allowed on a 40-home block. Up to 192 partiers, cars galore cramming our narrow streets. It doesn't matter whether district-wide percentages are 4, 8, 12. The avenues from Twin Lakes, Pleasure Point, through Opal Cliffs is being converted to hospitality fund zones by continuing that 20% block density. Your measles map here tells the story. Each red pustule represents one more vacation rental assault on our community. This map, far better than words can describe, depicts the despoliation caused by retaining that 20% per block and making those existing permits automatically renewable. So, what to do? Do the right thing. First, require county enforcement, not the solely and ineffectively one reliant on neighbor complaints. Fairness, bring Live Oak District average density down to under 4%, the average of Aptos and Davenport, as staff has demonstrated. Most importantly, bring per-block density in line with average district density to alleviate that choking concentration evidenced by county's map. Limit vacation rental permits to 5 years, period, not renewable. Please, I am begging you, act in your constituents' interests. Thank you for your time.
Any other comments?
My remarks were made before these changes were presented, so they may be a little bit of mix and match. The one thing that I would like to say about the amendment changes that you've made, under violations, you use the word "may." Everywhere else, you use the word "shall." I'd like to see "shall" under violations. Barcelona expects to reduce its licensed tour apartments to return to the normal rental market by 30% to meet the long-term needs of their city. We talk about with that we have a housing crisis, and yet this does not really do anything. The original premise was to help long-term housing. I don't see that these amendments actually do that. I'd like to see the processes and application fees be based on room rates, not just a flat fee, because that would add additional money to TOT, where you make cuts in the number of permits. You raise the fees in other ways. I urge you to get creative, think backwards. You know, look at how much comes in, how you can make it up in other ways. How many of you have vacation rentals next door to you? That's a big question. I don't think any of you do. And the one thing in here is that you have redlined out the number of people allowed. Is it still the same, where you have 2 additional per room, 8? That is totally overkill. Do you want 24 people next to you 365 days a year? That's a big issue, of how many people are allowed. And it has nothing to do with room rates. There's nothing about the nuisance issues of noise, litter, parking, not even a word that says permit holders shall require vacation renters to be curious, courteous of neighbors, and respectful behaviors are mandated. That could be under poster of rules. I feel that these amendments, in many ways, are disappointing, and I would encourage you to go back to the drawing board. Patty Brady, thank you.
Any other comments in the boardroom? Anyone down in the community room?
None.
Web comments?
We have one web comment. This is from Ken Davenport. Supervisor Leopold, thank you for your thoughtful and critical comments. I agree that the language is confusing and too often left up to administrator with, who has no clear guidance or internal policy. Thank you.
Okay.
Chair, could we just get some clarity? Ms. Brady had asked about the question about the number of people in, in there. I don't think we've made changes.
No, it was moved, it's shown as strikeout, because it was just moved to a different section, but it's this, that's unchanged.
Okay. And there was a question about connecting fees to rents. Are we allowed to do that, counsel? She had suggested that we connect the fees for the vacation rental permits to the amount of rent that they would charge. We're only allowed to charge for the time we spend on it. We're not allowed to charge above that, right?
Yeah, it's, it's, this is not a revenue-raising permit scheme. Basically, we, we charge the amounts, fixed amounts, that relate to the amount of time the staff works on it in order to provide the permit.
Thank you.
Okay. The only question I got, real quick, I think, I think one of the gentlemen mentioned, if he sells the property, then the vacation rental permit, it's not part of the sale, right?
That's correct.
That does affect the value of the property, though.
That's, that, that provisions in the current ordinance now that we're working under, and it's proposed to be unchanged. So that's true, is that when the property settles, the permit goes with the, with the former property owner, and the new property owner would be required to get a new permit.
Right. So hypothetically, if I was going to buy a property 2 years before I retire somewhere, and then I see the property's up for sale, and I know I'm not going to move into it for 2 years, would I be able to rent it out at all?
You would be required to...
For the 2 years until I move down into the property?
You would need a vacation rental permit. And under this scheme, you would be added to the waiting list, because we're going to cap that, the Loda, or the SADA, or the DASTA. And then when your name comes up on the list, you would be eligible to apply for a permit. That is the way the current package is put together.
Or you could have a renter who lives in your house for 2 years.
You could rent it out.
Right, yeah, for sure. This is just for vacation rentals. You can still rent.
You could rent it out. All right.
Anything over 30 days is a, is a month-to-month rental, like any other rental.
And everything we're doing does not affect Paharo Dunes, right?
That's right. I actually, and just with regard to the first speaker's comments, there are areas in the county that are not subject to the cap limits, and Beach Drive is one of those. And also Paharo Dunes, we have a list in the ordinance. So it wouldn't affect Beach Drive anyway. The moratorium affects Beach Drive until it lifts, but not the numerical vacation rental permit cap.
Okay. Anyway, do we have a motion with the amendments?
Chair, you know, Norman brought up the issues that I think are, are real. The concern about maintaining our residential neighborhoods has always been the driving force in the vacation rental permit discussion. It's been that way because we saw this slide into, into these commercial businesses operating in our residential neighborhoods. And 10 years ago, we didn't have anything in place, and we were watching neighborhoods disappear, or blocks disappear. And I drafted an ordinance, and for those who are here, remember, it was very controversial. It took a lot of work, and we negotiated an agreement to place some caps on. And at the first, it was only in the Live Oak area. Over the years, as new board members have joined here, they've recognized that this problem that has been exacerbated by VRBO, Airbnb, HomeAway, all these places. Not all of them were in existence in 2010 and 11, when we adopted this ordinance. But the proliferation of these has resulted in increasing pressure on, on, on turning homes into businesses instead of residential areas. I think that the time for investor-owned houses in our residential neighborhood, we need to put a stop on that. You know, in the Live Oak Coastal neighborhoods, this has always been a vibrant neighborhood community that we lose when we have people who buy the home so they can live in it a couple weeks out of the year and then rent it out the rest of it. That changes the nature of the neighborhood. We've seen this in the city of Capitola, who, who has a lot of second homes. And just getting people to serve on committees and commissions has been affected by that. That said, I think it is hard to take someone who owns a home, who bought it with the, with the basis that they were going to be able to do some renting out, to just, just say, "We're going to stop allowing you to do that." And that's why we have this program of five-year permits, and we can start, with this, we're taking some action to start putting the cap on and pushing it down and, and move over time to increasing number of homes. And I appreciate that there are people who want, who want this to happen faster. It's, that's, that can always be difficult. And what I'd like to propose is that we adopt the, the recommended actions, that we change the language on the, the district caps in the LODA to be 15% less than what they are now. And we don't include the percentages about hosted rentals. I don't want to take this, I want to end the interpretation and keep the, the specific numbers. I would like you to come back on August 4th with, when you do bring the, the maps, the block map, with some information, how a public member can file a complaint or verify a complaint as stated in the ordinance. So we understand what that guidance is. And that, that once this is approved by the Coastal Commission, that we send out notices to all vacation rental owners so they know what these changes have been.
Okay, so we have a motion. Okay, go ahead.
Just to clarify the motion, Supervisor, you first stated that we would adopt the recommended actions, but we can't adopt the recommended action if we're going to make changes to the ordinance. So this would have to come back. That's okay. So this, that would have to come back on August 4th for our first read. And I just want to make sure that, that the clerk got that.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification.
Okay. So we have a motion. We have a second?
I'll second. I do have one clarification of Supervisor Leopold on this specificity language on the revocation or renewal. I just wanted to be sure that, it's always been my intention that that language be broad so that it's really any violation of the county code be something that can be interpreted. So I just want to make sure we're not overly specifying what could lead to revocation or non-renewal.
If I could have something in writing about that broad nature, I'd be very happy about that. My concern, so I, I totally support what Supervisor Friend is saying. I want a broad interpretation about it.
We're going to have to vote on this. Go ahead.
I'm responding to what my colleague brought up, so...
We can't rewrite it now.
So continuing. The, the, if, I don't mean to create a more difficult or a more narrow interpretation, but when we have issues like verified complaints, I just want to make sure that we're clear about what that verification process is, or we should strike the language.
Okay, I think we're on the same page. I was, I was satisfied with the language they provided, at least in Section L. And it seems like you're expressing concerns in a different section. And so that'll be something that we can work with counsel on to ensure that we're there. But thank you. I'll maintain my second.
Call for a vote?
Supervisor Leopold?
Aye.
Friend?
Aye.
Hunerty?
Aye.
McPherson?
Aye.
Chairman Kepit?
Aye. Now we go to agenda item 11.1. Consider final reappointments to specific at-large positions on the Workforce Development Board. And nominations were accepted on June 16th, 2020. Any questions from the board members?
I would move the final appointment of Stephen Gray to the Santa Cruz Monterey Merced Managed Care Commission as an at-large hospital representative.
Excuse me, that one has been deleted.
Oh, okay.
Staff has, he withdrew his application.
Well, there you have it. We will not be considering that, and I will not make that motion.
What is the name on 11.1?
There are several names. They're reappointments of the incumbents.
Okay, thank you. That's enough.
So we, we added 11.1?
You're right.
You want me to read it in? I have to do that. So consider final reappointment to a specified at-large positions on the Workforce Development Board. Nominations accepted June 16th. And there's a board memo for now.
Okay. Anyone in the chambers like to speak? Anyone downstairs in the community room? Any, nothing on the web, so we're okay?
I move approval of the recommended actions on 11.1.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Supervisor Leopold?
Aye.
Friend?
Aye.
Hunerty?
Aye.
McPherson?
Aye.
Chair Kepit?
Aye. We will now recess to close session, and then we'll reconvene at 1:30, or you want to make it 1:45?
It's a scheduled item for 1:30 at this point.
All right. We better get out of here if we don't have lunch here.
Yeah, we didn't anticipate, I'm sorry, we didn't anticipate, we didn't bring in lunch today.
Okay.
Yeah. Can, can we do that?
We should.
Okay.
What you could do is, is take a break, have budget hearings at 1:30, and then continue to have the rest of the board meeting, including close session at the close of the budget hearings.
Okay. Okay. We'll do that. Is we, and we have time? 35 minutes is enough for everybody to get lunch? You're okay? We're all okay? Okay. We'll reconvene at 1:30 for budget hearings. Thank you.
Okay. We'll now resume the Continued Budget Hearing. It is Tuesday, June 30, 2020. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Supervisor Leopold?
Here.
Friend? Supervisor Friend? Do we have Supervisor Coonerty?
Here.
Supervisor McPherson?
Not yet. So we switched to a new team meeting.
Oh.
And Supervisor McPherson and Supervisor Friend might not know.
Oh.
So maybe their analyst can contact them or somebody from IT can contact them to get them on the right teams meeting?
Okay. Supervisor Friend?
Here.
Supervisor Coonerty?
Here.
Supervisor McPherson? Chairperson Capit?
Here.
Well, I'd say we keep on moving forward.
Should we go ahead or do you want me to wait another minute?
20 minutes.
There was a challenge with being let in. You have a quorum, so you can proceed if you'd like.
You want to try McPherson one more time and then we'll go ahead.
It doesn't look like he's there.
Okay, all right. Consideration of Late Additions to the Regular and Consent Agenda, Revisions and Corrections. Mr. Palacios, are there any late additions or changes?
No, there are no late additions or corrections.
Okay. Public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on topics on this agenda and topics that are not on the agenda but are within the jurisdiction of the board. Each person will have three minutes to speak. Is there any public testimony here in the chambers? And we do have one person. Hi.
Hi.
Okay. It's all yours.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, members of the County Board of Supervisors. My name is Elise Casby, and I've been an activist resident in Santa Cruz since 2013, summer of 2013. The reason that I'm here today has to do with my involvement as an activist in some of the movements that we've been hearing so much about, the Black Lives Matter movement and things like questioning the policing budgets and the budgets for jails and so forth and so on. And so my comment today is pretty general. I was just visiting the offices in the building, trying to find out what I could about government budgets and how does somebody even really approach them and who's in charge of them and so forth and so on. And so that is what my comment is somewhat directed to today, is that as an activist who's really interested in matters of democracy and government, who spent the last 25 years being deeply involved in grassroots movements and just sort of finding out what the lay of the land is, who are the different groups? I tend to be on the left, over to the center, to the radical left, all the way to the center. And I have even some things in common with people on the right. My general feeling about it is, is that people are feeling extremely alienated from government at this time. And specifically, when it comes down to law enforcement, I think there's many questions. I don't pretend that I'm representing anybody here today because I'm not an official spokesman. I'm just strictly speaking to you as a citizen. In particular, I am very concerned about the county jail and the recent death of a young person named Tomario Smith. The excuse that was given is it doesn't really seem to be... Do I still have a minute? Okay. It doesn't really seem to be factually based enough. It's he died of some kind of overingestion of water. So I just want to say, in these times, I think it would be really helpful if government would go what might seem to the status quo and people involved in the status quo as the extra, extra mile to bring in the public and questions about especially law enforcement and budget, how the jail is maintained and so forth. I'm sure you're aware of what's going on, but that's the first thing that I just wanted to say. And the second thing that I wanted to say is that I have witnessed the beefing up of policing, especially against the homeless. That's really what I think it amounts to. And I think that what we need are social services and outreach. So thank you for listening to me today.
You're welcome. Any public testimony in the community room?
None.
Okay. Anything on the web?
We have two web comments. The first web comment is from Ken Davenport. Dear Supervisors, I'm disappointed that the budget was mostly approved without more critical discussion. With COVID-19, your constituents are out of jobs, furloughed, and having trouble meeting basic needs for their families. Yet, from the funding perspective, it seems like business as usual in Santa Cruz County government. I sincerely hope you work harder this year to listen and understand the needs of your community. Thank you for your consideration. And the second web comment is from Oscar Paz. Hello, I am upset that you are not allowing public comment on this issue. What is what are you avoiding? It is difficult to find these silly bubbles and say what I'm thinking. This is not a democracy. Not to the point, would defunding the police make us safer? Police departments already have enormous budgets. Are we getting what we pay for or are we allowing public funding to go to waste? Defund the police. Defund the police. The thing that almost never gets cut in moments like these is police budgets. What's up with that? People are losing jobs, housing. What are we protecting? Who do you serve? Is this what you want out of your life? The Oakland Police Department receives nearly half of the city's discretionary spending. That is more than human service, parks, recreation, and transportation combined. Minneapolis, where George Floyd was killed, passed its budget in December, and it increased its budget for police by $10 million to a total of $193 million. Here's what they're spending on other things: $31 million for affordable housing, $250 for community organizations, working without risk youth, $400,000 for Office of Crime Prevention. Where are we not investing in things that are actually needed in the county? As a brown and undocumented person working full-time in this county, I do not feel safe around cops. I have been I've had bad experiences with them ever since I moved here and since I do not trust them. I will never call the police across the county program service are being cut because of this crisis, a bigger crisis, is not utilizing the funds properly. The police protects property. Shame that you are not taking action and joining other cities across America to defund the police. I hope that your next life, you never have to experience property, housing issues, or let alone be a born, a colored person in this world. Challenge the system and see how far you go. Thank you for reading these words. I hope you make the city proud.
Okay. Well, thank you. And that concludes public comment. And we'll go now to item 56. As the Board of Supervisors of the Redevelopment Successor Agency, consider and authorize the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector with the concurrence of the county administrative officer to make necessary end, year-end adjustments for 2019, 2020 due to increases and decreases in available financing, and approve the proposed 2020, 2021-year Redevelopment Successor Agency budgets as referenced in the outlined budget documents and memorandum of the county administrative officer. Do we have any comments? Yes?
Yes, Chair. I'd like to invite our budget manager, Christina Maori, to give the staff report on this and the following items.
Yes, thank you, Carlos. And good afternoon, Chair Capit and members of the board. Christina Maori, your county budget manager. So the item 56 allows the auditor, controller with the concurrence of the county administrative officer to make any of those necessary year-end adjustments due to the changes in available financing that occur at year-end. So it's recommended that your board approve the proposed 2021 Redevelopment Successor Agency budgets as referenced in the outlined documents and memo included in your packet pages four through nine. And I'm available to answer any questions.
All right. We have any board questions? I don't hear any. So hey, thank you very much for your report, and I guess we're ready to go, and we'll open it up for public comment, I guess. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is Supervisor McPherson. I wanted to, yeah, I wanted to once again thank our county workforce for sharing in the pain of the budget process this year, especially Christina Maori, who has tried to scare us through an unbelievable budget situation, and especially those county employees who have gone to the front lines of COVID-19. This has been anything but... As was stated by somebody who addressed us, no, I don't know that we can say this county's done it perfectly, but I think we're doing it as well as we can under some really trying circumstances. When state orders are changed, if not every other day, every other week, we have a lot to deal with. And I, as I said earlier today, rather than just slashing services, we are all taking a reduction in pay to help those, help close the gap. And I appreciate, once again, our board and our county leadership for setting an example in this regard. Everybody has taken a cut on this, the sheriff included. And as we are proposed, but we're going to finalize this in August, of course. So I think we have done an excellent job as a county board with allocating our health and human services to the best of our ability and expanding them throughout to numerous agencies who help our people in greatest need in Santa Cruz County. I, and as far as the redevelopment agency was just mentioned, and that's a long-gone thing, but I, you know, for one of those things that a board before I was on this county board of supervisors, how they use the redevelopment agency money that was available to the best of their ability, and I know that Supervisor Leopold was in the middle of that situation, and how we handled the funding so we could use it for services and capital improvements was incredibly outstanding. People probably have forgotten that because that was, what, 10 years ago or so? But we have done some things that are very much correct in our budgeting process in Santa Cruz County. I think we are trying to address issues, whether it be in health and human services or parks facilities or public safety. I think we have really spread it out as well as very well, and I'd like to give credit to everybody in the budgeting process, especially in Santa Cruz County, for helping us get through this very trying situation. And I look forward to the revised budget outlook during our hearings in August, and I sincerely hope that greater assistance is on its way from the state and federal agencies. But this is, these are tough times, and they, you have to come up with decisions. Everybody in the county has been part of the solution, all of our employees, not only for the services that they have provided in the COVID-19 pandemic, but just in saying that, okay, we're going to take, we're going to take a cut ourselves to get us through this, which amounts to, I think, somewhere in the neighborhood of $10 million. I understand our outlook is a little better since there's been some reopening, which I'm sure some people disagree with, but we'll hear more about that from Christina Maori. But I think that the way we have steered through the course in this unpredictable, unbelievable situation, I am just very proud to be part of what you might call the solution to the best of our abilities and to make sure nobody's hurt too much, but everybody has to take part of the responsibility to get us on track in balancing our budget, which is required by state law. So thank you again to everybody, especially to Christina Maori and the whole administrative team from Santa Cruz County. Appreciate it very much. I'm done.
I want to compliment and thank all the county workers. Normally, you would hear some complaints somewhere. I haven't heard any. I don't know if the other board members have heard any, but I'm amazed at how everybody is willing to pitch in and reach into their own pocketbooks and take some money out, which is basically what's going to happen. And I guess there'll be some frozen openings for hiring, and there'll probably be some early retirements and things like that that'll be worked out by the county administrative officer, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes, and this item is just the redevelopment agency. We're getting to the county budget next, so this one is just redevelopment, and then we'll talk about all the other things at the next item.
Okay. Okay, I'll open it up to the public. Thank you.
So I know that I'm supposed to make comments, but from what I just heard, adjustment over here, it sounds like I'm probably more interested in the next item.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
But I do, I do just want to say, I am somebody who is very interested in...
What are we protecting? Who do you serve? Is this what you want out of your life? The Oakland Police Department receives nearly half of the city's discretionary spending. That is more than human service, parks, recreation, and transportation combined. Minneapolis, where George Floyd was killed, passed its budget in December and it increased its budget for police by 10 million to a total of 193 million. Here's what they're spending on other things. 31 million for affordable housing, 250 for community organizations, working without risk youth, 400,000 for Office of Crime Prevention. Where are we not investing in things that are actually needed in the county? As a brown and undocumented person working full-time in this county, I do not feel safe around cops. I have been, I've had bad experiences with them ever since I moved here and since I do not trust them. I will never call the police across the county program service are being cut because of this crisis, a bigger crisis is utilizing the funds properly. The police protects property. Shame that you are not taking action and joining other cities across America to defund the police. I hope that your next life, you never have to experience property, housing issues, or let alone be a born, a colored person in this world. Challenge the system and see how far you go. Thank you for reading these words. I hope you make the city proud.
Okay. Well, thank you. And that concludes public comment. And we'll go now to item 56. As the Board of Supervisors of the Redevelopment Successor Agency, consider and authorize the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector with the concurrence of the county administrative officer to make necessary end, year-end adjustments for 2019, 2020 due to increases and decreases in available financing and approve the proposed 2020, 2021 year redevelopment successor agency budgets as referenced, as re-referenced in the outlined budget documents and memorandum of the county administrative officer. Do we have any comments? Yes?
Yes, Chair. I'd like to invite our Budget Manager Christina Maury to give the staff report on this and the following items.
Yes, thank you, Carlos. And good afternoon, Chair Capit and members of the board. Christina Maury, your county budget manager. So the item 56 allows the auditor controller with the concurrence of the county administrative officer to make any of those necessary year-end adjustments due to the changes in available financing that occur at year-end. So it's recommended that your board approve the proposed 2021 redevelopment successor agency budgets as referenced in the outlined documents and memo included in your packet pages four through five. And I'm available to answer any questions.
All right. We have any board questions? I don't hear any. So, hey, thank you very much for your report. And I guess we're ready to go. And we'll open it up for public comment, I guess. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This Supervisor McPherson. I wanted to, yeah, I wanted to once again thank our county workforce for sharing in the pain of the budget process this year, especially Christina Maury, who has tried to scare us through an unbelievable budget situation. And especially those county employees who've gone to the front lines of COVID-19. This has been anything but just as was stated by somebody who addressed us. No, I don't know that we can say this county's done it perfectly, but I think we're doing it as well as we can under some really trying circumstances. When state orders are changed, if not every other day, every other week, we have a lot to deal with. And I, as I said earlier today, rather than just slashing services, we are all taking a reduction in pay to help those, help close the gap. And I appreciate, once again, our board and our county leadership for setting an example in this regard. Everybody has taken a cut on this, the sheriff included. And as we are proposed, but we're going to finalize this in August, of course. So I, I think we have done an excellent job as a county board with allocating our health and human services to the best of our ability and expanding them throughout to numerous agencies who help our people in greatest need in Santa Cruz County. I, and as far as the redevelopment agency was just mentioned, and that's a long-gone thing, but I, you know, for one of those things that, a board before I was on this county board of supervisors, how they, they used the redevelopment agency money that was available to the best of their ability. And I know that Supervisor Leopold was in the middle of that situation. And how we handled the funding. So we could use it for services and capital improvements was incredibly outstanding. People probably have forgotten that because that was, what, 10 years ago or so. But we, we have done some things that are very much correct in our budgeting process in Santa Cruz County. I think we are trying to address issues, whether it be in health and human services, or parks facilities, or public safety. I think we have really spread it out as well as, very well. And I'd like to give credit to everybody in the budgeting process, especially in Santa Cruz County, for helping us get through this very trying situation. And I look forward to the revised budget outlook during our hearings in August. And I sincerely hope that greater assistance is on its way from the state and federal agencies. But this is, these are tough times. And they, you have to come up with decisions. Everybody in the county has been part of the solution, all of our employees, not only for the services that they have provided in the COVID-19 pandemic, but just in saying that, okay, we're going to take, we're going to take a cut ourselves to get us through this, which amounts to, I think, somewhere in the neighborhood of $10 million. I understand our outlook is a little better since there's been some reopening, which I'm sure some people disagree with. But we'll hear more about that from Christina Maury. But I think that the way we have steered through the course in this unpredictable, unbelievable situation, I am just very proud to be part of what you might call the solution to the best of our abilities and to make sure nobody's hurt too much. But everybody has to take part of the responsibility to get us on track in balancing our budget, which is required by state law. So thank you again to everybody, especially to Christina Maury and the whole administrative team from Santa Cruz County. Appreciate it very much. I, I'm done.
I want to compliment and thank all the county workers. Normally you would hear some complaints somewhere. I haven't heard any. I don't know if the other board members have heard any. But I'm amazed at how everybody is willing to pitch in and reach into their own pocketbooks and take some money out, which is basically what's going to happen. And I guess there'll be some frozen openings for hiring. And there'll probably be some early retirements and things like that that'll be worked out by the county administrative officer, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes, and this item is just the redevelopment agency. We're getting to the county budget next. So this one is just redevelopment. And then we'll talk about all the other things at the next item.
Okay. Okay, I'll open it up to the public. Thank you.
So I know that I'm supposed to make comments, but from what I just heard, an adjustment over here. Sounds like I'm probably more interested in the next item.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
But I do, I do just want to say, I am somebody who is very interested in government and budgets. Like most people, I think, allergic to the whole idea of really getting to know the budget. And so I just want to say that if you have any room for questions, I know this isn't maybe the best place, but if you're willing to entertain any questions at all, if you could just tell me what this item means a little bit when you say redevelopment successor agency budgets? Or maybe you want to refer me to someone, but I realize it's probably outside the more appropriate procedure. Thank you.
Sure.
You bet. Okay, any other comments from the public either here, the community room, or web? I don't hear, I don't hear any, see any. That'll, we'll close the public hearing. And if we do have a motion, a second?
Chair, just for the education of our public member, the county had a redevelopment agency for roughly 25 years. The state legislature and the governor eliminated that in 2011 because they sold bonds to pay for improvements in the community. There's a successor agency which oversees the final allotment of that money. I appreciate Supervisor McPherson recognizing the good work that the county did in the closing of redevelopment. We took an outlier strategy and chose to invest all that money before the closure happened. And we were, I think, the only agency in the county that didn't have to return money to the state. So we're still seeing those benefits. And we talked at our last meeting about even the last, here 10 years later, we still have housing money that we placed over in the housing authority as part of that closure. So it's been very successful. I'm prepared to move the recommended actions for the redevelopment successor agencies.
Second.
Okay, first, second, we'll call the roll.
Supervisor Leopold?
Aye.
Friend?
Aye.
Punerty?
Aye.
McPherson?
Aye.
Chairman Capit?
Aye. Passes unanimously. And that will take us to item 57. Consider the year 2020, 2021. County of Santa Cruz proposed budget concluding actions. Authorize the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector with the concurrence of the county administrative officer to make necessary year-end adjustments and for 2020 and 2021 due to increases and decreases, decreases in available financing. And a report item. And approve the 2020, 21 County of Santa Cruz proposed budget including concluding report items and take related actions as outlined in the memorandum memorandum of the county administrative officer. We'll have a presentation first, okay?
Yes, thank you, Chair Capit. This is still Christina Maury, your county budget manager. So the purpose of this report is to provide your board with the concluding report and last day of budget actions to complete the 2021 budget pro forma. So the materials are in your packet, pages 10 through 26. And I want to just, there'll be three items I'm going to cover. So the first item is going to be the financial update, including the status of the general fund contingency. That's attachment one and exhibit one, which is pages 17 through 26. I'll give you a state budget update since the reporting of this report. And I'll also walk through and give you a few highlights of the closing actions for 1920 and 2021 that can be found on pages 12 through 16 in your report. So first, I want to sort of highlight for you so far where we're at with the general fund contingencies. Page 17 in your report is attachment one. It provides a summary of the changes in the concluding report and reflects the net overall savings and the various charges, which are offset happily by an increase in contingencies of $841,446. The exhibits start on page 18, where there's an exhibit summarizing all the changes. Exhibit one, one A, covers all the county overhead realignment, which saves about $335,000. Exhibit one B is the property tax administration fees, which are realigned for 1920 and 2021 for the departments that oversee our property tax administration. There's an increase there for next year of $254,060. Exhibits one C is the realignment of the public safety revenue, proposition 172, which realigns all of that revenue. Actually, we're anticipating the decrease as it relates to COVID. So it really realigns those losses to those public safety departments. Exhibit one D is a realignment of the data processing charges. I'm happy to say there's a savings there this year due to reduced costs within the information services department of about $1.1 million. And exhibit one E is the realignment of radio charges. We also have a decrease there in costs due to savings within the radio shop. And one F, of course, is everybody's favorite, the accounting summary of the changes to contingencies. So the net effect of all these changes increases contingencies from $3.4 million to $4.2 million before any changes are considered during the August budget hearings to address the financial constraints from the impact of COVID-19 on the economy and the county's revenues. So we'll be covering that in August. The second thing I want to update you on is to give you an update since the, the report on the state budget. So last Friday, as you, as you probably know, the legislature passed the 2021 Budget Act, bringing a temporary completion to a budget process that was entirely upended by the onset of COVID-19. The legislature and the governor were able to forge an agreement on a budget. And the budget bill, AB 89, was sent to Governor Newsom for his signature. Given the ongoing nature of the pandemic, the delay and the delay in knowing how much tax revenue the state will receive due to the extended filing deadline and the continued uncertainty about whether any additional federal funds will be received to the state, it's entirely possible that the governor and the legislature may need to revisit certain aspects of the budget during the upcoming year. So in addition to the main budget bill, numerous budget trailer bills were adopted by the legislature and those that contain county priorities. The governor also issued a proclamation of a budget emergency, which allows them to utilize funds from the state's rainy day fund. So as you know, the county budget priorities included in the state budget shifted significantly between January and June. But ultimately, a sustained and coordinated advocacy effort by counties was successful in achieving positive outcomes on several high priority issues. Many directly responsible in response to the pandemic. So there's key funding in the state budget. Includes $1 billion at the state level as a realignment backfill to help prevent devastating cuts that would occur to safety net programs due to the decline in realignment revenue, which comes from sales tax and VLF. So it's going to take several weeks before the county receives detailed information regarding the realignment backfill amount for the county. But what is known is that of that $1 billion, $750 million is guaranteed to counties. And whereas $250 million is subject to trigger cuts depending on whether the state receives additional federal stimulus funding. So my preliminary estimate is this could save the county about a third of our combined realignment revenue losses for 1920 and 2021, which is estimated between $6 and $8 million, which will be included in the revised budget proposal in August. In addition, the state allocated CARES Act funding to counties. As we've mentioned before, assuming the state approved the budget, we are due to receive $28 million, which is our share of the CARES Act funding from the state passed through from the federal government. And it's anticipated that $2 to $4 million of these funds will help the county with its unreimbursed costs related to the emergency. Those are costs above and beyond any grants we received and any FEMA funding we're expecting. So this will greatly help the 1920 county deficit. And the remaining funding will be presented to the board in August with how to best address the costs associated with the emergency through December. Also included in the state's budget is $100 million for the increased costs of the November election and the new requirements in response to the pandemic. It's unknown how much the county will receive to assist with the increased election costs. And it's expected that the details will be provided in the August budget hearings. We also, the state allocated $900 million for various homelessness efforts allocated to cities, counties, and continuums of care from both federal funds and the state general fund. And the county will be receiving an allocation of those funds. And you'll hear more about that in August. So the third area I want to cover, which is always everybody's favorite, is those 1 through 35 itemized actions that allow us to actually put together the, in preparation for the adopted budget in September. So this year will be a little different because you're going to take actions today and you'll take additional actions in August. And the combination of these actions and the actions in August will make up the adopted budget that you'll take action on it at the end of September. So most of these actions are fairly routine. They begin on page 12 of your packet. And they allow the auditor with concurrence from our office to make necessary adjustments as part of fiscal year-end close and preparation for the adopted budget. All of the adjustments will be prepared and brought back to your board for ratification in September with the adopted budget. And we'll include the changes the board approves in August. So items 1 through 11 address the 2019, 20 adjustments. And there's a couple new items there I want to just call to your attention in case you have any questions. Item number two is related to allowing the county to reimburse ourselves for any of the COVID-19 costs from the CARES Act funding that we're due to receive from the state. And item 10 addresses reimbursement of costs for public works for the Twin Lakes Project closeout costs. Item 11 addresses matching funds from contingencies for the emergency culvert projects that your board approved in January for Capitola Road and February for Sumner Avenue. So this allows for those matching funds from contingencies. And items 12 through 32 are all related to the 2021 budget adjustments. And I need to make a correction to item 31. It should read the application period through August 6th instead of July 31st, so that we can allow enough time for those applications to be received. So, but item 31 is a new item. It authorizes personnel to extend and relaunch the retirement incentive application period through August 6th. And the program elements all remain the same with the exception of the retirement date, which will be on or before December 31st for retirements approved in the second application period. And this, we believe, will help assist with some additional layoffs. Item 32 is another new item that will authorize the auditor controller with the concurrence of our office to adjust the appropriations to effectuate the furlough savings by department as authorized and agreed by the bargaining units and approved by your board today, which will be effective July 11th. Item 33 sets priorities to address the expected shortfall in the general fund fund balance available and authorizes the use of reserves to offset the expected shortfall for 1920. Now, originally, we expected up to $20 million. And now it's estimated at approximately $10 million due to the improvements in revenues, some use of some one-time revenue, and also the anticipated reimbursement of costs related to the COVID response that we'll receive from the CARES Act. And then we believe that we'll need the remainder of some of those reserves to help us balance the 2021 budget. And we will bring that to your board in August for consideration. So I want to just take a moment to thank the county staff and everyone who worked on the budget, especially the staff within our county administrative office. David, Eric, Gattisa, Nancy, Peter, Rita, Sven, and Trish. They've worked tirelessly in new ways to complete the budget and before you today. And they're continuing to work with departments on revisions related to the pandemic to present something to you in August. It's times like this that staff shine. And we are very fortunate to have an exceptional team willing to go above and beyond and to put together a plan guided by the strategic and operational plan and your board's priorities. This is a challenging time, and I'm very grateful to be able to help make a difference and grateful for the support, cooperation, and leadership of the county departments and budget staff. A special thanks to our county administrative office leaders that I admire greatly and have relied on for support. Carlos, Nicole, Elisa, and Melody, I couldn't do this without you, and I thank you. So it's recommended that your board take the recommended actions as outlined in the memo and return in August with modifications to the budget to address the COVID-19 impacts, including any updates related to state and federal funding. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Chair?
Yes.
Yes.
Supervisor, supervisor. Got a little ahead of myself. I wanted to combine all budget things in one package, I guess. But again, want to thank the county workforce for sharing in the pain of balancing this budget process. Ms. Maury, what's your best estimate? What will be left on our reserve fund? Will it be down to 7% if all of these things come to pass? We got up to 10%. You're thinking maybe we'll have to go down to 7%. Is that probably correct at this time?
Yeah, so we, we still believe we won't go past the 7% minimum. We won't need quite as much for 1920 to balance the books. And we'll use part of that into 2021. But between the two, we won't go beyond the 7% minimum. And we may do a little bit better.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Any other Supervisor Leopold?
Well, I just want to say a couple things, Chair. First, Ms. Maury, thanks for your work on the first half of the fraternal twins that we're having this year as our budget process. All the work that you and everybody did for putting together this budget and then having to go through the whole process a second time is a lot more work than you usually have. And I appreciate your dedication and consistency to get it done. And there is some hopeful news that you shared with us today, which is good. At lunchtime, I saw something online that said that Republicans in the Senate are now talking that by the end of July, they'll have something done at the federal level. And hopefully that will help us out as well. You know, at the beginning of today's meeting, we heard from people who saying that we weren't making ourselves available. But we're one of the few public agencies that have continued holding in public meetings. And we provided new ways for people to get in contact with us. We are also, I think, showing some wisdom in not making all of our budget decisions now before we know what's going to happen and instead coming back in August with better information. There are lots of issues and concerns that people have about the budget. And until we actually know what kind of resources we have, it's impossible to say, we'll fund this, we won't cut that, we will reduce funding in some area. We want a system that, that reflects our values. And a budget is our, is our best value document. And this budget this year, when it's finally settled in August, will be the reflection of every employee in the county contributing to making it a success. Because Ms. Maury and her crew may be the ones who put the budgets together. And the financial staff and all the departments help that. financial staff and all the departments help that. But this year, each employee is contributing towards what we will have in our budget. By accepting the furloughs and helping us save jobs, we'll have more people working here than we would if we didn't have that. I want to express my appreciation to all the county employees who helped make the success of the county government every day, and especially this year when we are asking a lot of you. And to the public, we're going to work, we have a set of budget principles that is focused on keeping services to the public as much as we can, and we will do that. And I look forward to the discussion in August. There will be some tough decisions that we have to make then, but I'm confident with the groundwork that we've laid in building up our reserves by aggressively seeking funding from outside sources, by being strategic about how we spend money, that we will have resources to make good decisions for the people of Santa Cruz County. Thank you for your work.
Any other supervisor? I'll make a comment. I want to make sure we thank the taxpayers. Everything in this room, all of us included, our salaries, all the furniture, electrical work, the roads, and everything else is all paid for by the taxpayers. And as elected officials, we have like a sacred trust to spend public funds wisely, honestly, and fairly. And I think we've done that. And one thing that was, I think, very wise was building up our reserve fund, which at one time was as low as just a little over $10 million, and now it's up, well, it was, up to over $55, $56 billion. And I guess the other is, what I've said before too, when we have good times, we've got to spend the money, the same as we're going to spend money in bad times, meaning like, once we get out of this, we can't get the feeling that it's not going to happen again. I mean, when I got elected to the city council in Watsonville, everything was going along well, and then all of a sudden, the Great Recession hit. And we remember that. That wasn't that long ago. Then we got out of that with the county and everything, working with people, 7.5% furloughs and all that. And then, we got hit with this coronavirus. So, the point I'm getting at is that when we get out of this, and we are, we're going to all get out of this, that we are mindful of the fact that this could happen again in a different way, in a worse way or not as bad a way. But no matter how we're spending taxpayer money, we have to do it very wisely. It's a very important part of our sacred trust that the voters have given us to overlook all the money that comes in. And we're talking about a lot of taxpayer money. So, and of course, I already thank the county workers and department heads and fellow supervisors for the sacrifices we're going to make. And so, I'll now turn it over to anybody else who wants to comment. We have public comment, and it's, you have the floor. You're one of the taxpayers, right?
I feel important if only by the fact that you're here. So, I just also want to thank you all. I'm really hopeful to hear how much is being done to help us all and everybody living here. Thank you, Ms. Mallory, and thank you, Mr. Leopold. Thank you so much for answering my question.
I'm an in-person person, so I just really appreciate everything I'm learning here today about the employees taking on the burden of actually basically letting go of money and accepting furloughs and doing what you can to address these really unusual times. Hopefully, they are truly unusual as we move into the future. What I just want to kind of really zero in on, because it's one area that I am familiar with, is I heard Ms. Mallory say that $900 million is coming from the state that's probably to address homelessness issues, probably within the whole entire state. I'm sure that amount isn't just coming here. But I want to say that I have been extremely involved in observing all kinds of issues pertaining to people being unhoused and what happens to them, and I am incredibly concerned about what I consider, just again, I'm coming from the point of view of a grassroots activist, so if I sound critical, it's because I'm coming from that point of view. But I've heard so much today that's encouraging. I really want to emphasize that. But at one point this past year, $10 million supposedly came from the state into our county. I did as much as I could to try to observe what was going on with that $10 million. I believe there has been, well, I know there's been a grand jury investigation and report that was listed on the county website from 2015, that what we need more than anything is emergency homeless shelters. And I just want to say that I know that the churches are coming together to provide for this, for homeless needs, but I really think that the state is the best, meaning the government, is the best people to provide emergency shelters, not the Salvation Army, not other groups. We need an emergency shelter that's robust enough to really deal with the various clientele and the people that are homeless. So, I just want to say I was not pleased with the, I could not get more information. It seemed like a lot of that money went into salaries at the HAP and others. I'm just hoping that we can do better to actually get those services to the people who are homeless. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other persons either downstairs or on the computer?
Chair, if I could just, if I could just make a final comment. So, this budget was largely developed prior to the COVID emergency, and for that reason, we recommended, and your board has adopted that recommendation, to come back in August once we have more information, rather than try and adopt a budget with incomplete information. So, we are going to come back on August 10 through 13 with recommendations to amend this budget based on more information about how our revenues have been affected. Also, we'll have more information about state and federal aid and our own local revenues as well. And then, we will be asking the board to adopt an amended budget on August 18. The news is somewhat better from what we initially thought. We initially thought we were going to use $20 million of reserves this year, and now we think we're only going to use about $10 million this year. That means we could probably be use the other $10 million next year to help balance next year's budget. And then, we also have the CARES Act Fund will be able to help us. We also have some of the realignment backfill that will help us. Our revenues are somewhat better than we thought because the reopening happened much sooner than expected. But nevertheless, it's going to still be a very challenging budget. And so, I do really want to thank all of the county employees for the sacrifice they have made in agreeing to furloughs. I know that's a very difficult thing to do. I know it's a very challenging thing to ask, and I just want to thank all of them for that. I also want to thank our board for agreeing to take furloughs themselves at a higher level. I think that shows great leadership. And I also want to thank Ms. Mallory for her leadership. She's really our leader in the budget, and she's, it's very difficult. We just ran a marathon, and we're going to start another one. So, it's a difficult proposition for Ms. Mallory and our staff in the CAO's office and all the staff in the departments as well. So, I thank them for all their efforts. We're going to get through this, and we will be back, we'll be working all July, and we will be back in August with budget amendments once we have more information. Thank you.
You're welcome. And you probably remember, you were the city manager of Watsonville. I was on the city council, and when the recession hit right there, you took a big 10% pay cut and also gave up a raise that you had coming up, and all the city workers in Watsonville all gave up 10%. This one that we're voting on, some will give up 5%, some will give up 7.5%, and then the board and department heads will be giving up 10% if I'm not mistaken. So, we're trying to share some of the hurt with the public because the public is having such a hard time paying their bills and trying to keep their doors open. And of course, when your doors close, the public, that's the tax money we have coming in, and if we don't have it coming in, we have nothing, we have nothing. So, anyway, thank you. Is it ready for a motion? Okay, I'm ready to go.
I'm looking forward to it. I'm prepared to move the recommended actions for the county budget for the following, for the coming year.
Second.
You have a motion in a second?
Ready for the roll call vote. Supervisor Leopold?
Aye.
Brand?
Aye.
Coonerty?
Aye.
McPherson?
Aye.
Chairman Capit?
Aye. And that passes unanimously, and I believe now, let's see, where am I? We go into closed session, right?
That's right. We're going to go into closed session, nothing reportable.
Nothing reportable.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Thank you. That concludes the meeting, and thank you.